Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 26th version of the Edina Planning Commission. Jack, if you could please take role.
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Commissioner Strong.
Here.
Commissioner Seale.
Here.
Commissioner Navarro.
Here.
Commissioner O'Callaghan.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
So first up on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any adds or deletions tonight?
Move approval agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item up on here is approval of the meeting minutes. What's there is the, actually, shouldn't that say consent agenda? But Planning Commission meeting minutes for the August 12th meeting, are there any changes or deletions to those? Updates? Hearing.
Consent agenda.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So next up is community comment. This is the time where anyone can come forth and have about three minutes to speak, like to hear your comments for anything. I would just ask that if you do come up, it's something that's not on the agenda later on, you'll have a chance for that, at least for the public hearings later on. So would anyone like to come forth?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Scott Neal, and I'm the city manager at Edina. And I'm here tonight to extend a personal invitation to you to attend the inaugural Edina Urban Design Symposium. It's going to be a two-hour event on Monday morning, September 14th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. We're looking for the right venue, so this is more of a save the date kind of a notification for you today. But it's something that members of the City Council have been thinking about and wanting to organize for some time, to find some venue for a greater discussion about really the way that density works in the community. And we have found a speaker who we think is going to be fantastic at giving this kind of message about how density and particularly redevelopment economics can work in favor of a community that's thoughtful about how it uses density and redevelopment. His name is Joe Minicozy. He is an urban designer and architect and economist from Asheville, North Carolina. And he's coming to do some lecturing at the University of Minnesota during that week. He's going to do some other speaking engagements in the Twin Cities. So we've engaged him to do an Edina-focused presentation on this morning. So we're going to fill him full of information about the city. He's going to come and give about an hour of presentation and have about an hour of Q and A. We'll fill you full of coffee and donuts and other kinds of treats for breakfast, but we hope you'll all come. So if you'll put that as a save the date on your calendar, you'll hear more details from us about actual venue and other information about the symposium. So, thank you.
So that was Monday?
Monday.
September 14th.
September 14th.
At 8:00 to 10:00.
Eight to 10:00.
Assuming we'll be getting invitations at some point.
Yes, you will.
At one symposium.
Yep.
Is that open to the public? Anyone can come?
I think so, yeah. So we're trying to find the right venue so that we can accommodate a crowd that might be as big as 30 or as big as 130.
Sure. I just wanted to double-check that everyone was invited.
Yep, it's a public event.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments, community comments? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close.
Motion to close public comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So next up are two public hearings tonight. There's two variances. Chris or Carrie, if you could introduce those, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the request is for a 1.75-foot front yard setback variance for 5732 France Avenue South for owner Ann Bishop. Subject property is located along the west side of France Avenue as highlighted. It consists of a story and a half home with an attached two-car garage. Here is the front of the home as it looks today, and another view. The proposal, actually, they're going to be doing quite a bit of interior remodeling, and the focus really is on the dining room as it relates to the front yard setback variance. What they would like to accomplish is a bay window in replacement of the window that is on the right-hand side here. The problem is, the ordinance requires that any improvement to the front of the house maintains the average front yard setback along the block between intersections, or the other choice is to average the homes on either side. And unfortunately for this situation, the average, there are four homes that really affect the average on the block. That didn't allow the addition. And the average on either side also, even though it was less of an intrusion, it still requires a 1.75-foot front yard setback. What really affects the property is the home to the north, which is quite a bit further back than the subject property, and also the property south of the subject property. Here is a floor plan of the proposed addition, highlighted in pink, which is basically a bay window extending the floor area in the dining room remodeling. And then here would be the new elevation, replacing that window that's to the right of the front facade of the house. So the primary issue is the variance justified. Staff does recommend approval of the variance. The proposal meets all the standards for a variance. The practical difficulty is caused by the location of the home to the north. It's actually further back than the existing home is, as it exists currently without the bay window addition. The home to the south is actually closer, and with the improvement on this house, the home to the south is still closer to the front yard setback than the house with the new improvement. The encroachment into the setback continues a setback pattern and will not affect the neighboring properties or the streetscape. There's quite a bit of distance between the sidewalls of this house and the homes on either side. And the request is reasonable, given that the location of the existing home and the existing floor plan, it's a very modest addition. Staff would recommend approval based on the plans submitted. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Haker? Thanks, Chris. So up next, if the applicant wants to come forth, say anything about this? The applicant here? All right.
I'm the contractor, I work for the contractor, not the homeowner.
Okay. If you just maybe step to the podium and introduce yourself and where you're from.
Greg Hansen with Sylvester Construction.
Okay.
Um, we feel, as Chris stated, the bay window is not intrusive at all. It's tucked underneath the existing overhang of the home, and the setback is over 65 feet. So we feel that it really shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone wants to come forth and testify about this, I'd take them at this time. Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Public hearing is closed, so we'll take it back up to the Planning Commission. Any discussion on this one? Comments? Seems fairly straightforward to me. Yes, Commissioner Forrest?
I move approval of the variance subject to the staff.
Second.
Conditions.
So a motion that's been forwarded and seconded, are there any further discussions on that? With that, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So up next is a variance for David and Lisa Ramsey at 5425 Woodcrest Drive in Edina. That might have been a record. Welcome back.
So this also is a front yard setback variance request, I'm sorry, side yard setback variance request. It's for 3.6 feet. It is for 5425 Woodcrest Drive for Lisa and David Ramsey. The subject property is located on the north side of Woodcrest Drive as highlighted. It consists of a two-story home with an attached two-car garage. Here is a photo of the home as it exists today. The applicant is proposing to construct a second-story addition above a garage addition to the front of the house. Here is a survey of the subject property showing existing and proposed conditions. The footprint will expand towards the street by nine feet four inches in the area of the garage. The homeowners would like to add on to the garage in order to allow more maneuvering space within the garage, it's pretty tight currently, and then also to convert a back portion of the garage into a mudroom. Along with that, they will be adding second-floor living space to tie in with a master bedroom that currently exists above the garage. The living space that will be above the garage addition is centered above the garage addition with the roofline area from the living space above tying in with the garage below. Here's a more detailed version of the site plan showing that expansion of the footprint. It's a rather small expansion of the footprint. This would be the foundation plan. And here's the floor plan. It illustrates that mudroom addition that ties in with the living space, and then also a little more garage area to allow more maneuvering of the cars. It's a pretty tight two-car garage. And then here is the second-floor living space. There's currently a master bedroom above the garage, and then this would be the extension of that living space, which is centered above the garage extension. And the area highlighted in pink is the roofline area, the structural roof area that overlaps into the required setback. Here is the new elevation that is being proposed, with a gable roof facing the front yard. Again, highlighted in pink is the structural roof area that would, it ties in the living space above that's centered. The living space is 10 feet away from the south lot line, which is the minimum required setback for living space. The garage will be 6.4 feet, which is less than the 10 feet required, but it will be an extension of a legally non-conforming setback of the garage. The upper floor, you can see that there is living space above the garage currently, but that was accomplished through a variance. So any extension of the living space cannot use the non-conforming setback clause for extension. So in order for them to extend the living space that connects the structural area of the roofline to the garage below, the highlighted area in pink requires a variance. So this is the south elevation, and again, area highlighted in pink is the area in question that requires a variance. The actual living space inside or underneath the roofline is 10 feet, nine feet away from the, 10.9 feet away from the side lot line, which is maintaining that minimum 10-foot setback. Here's the roof framing plan, and then also a section showing that knee wall area. This is actually on the left-hand side, but it would be duplicated on the right-hand side, showing the area that would be encroaching or overlapping into that setback area. A little bit of history on the property. The house was built in 1940. It had a single-stall garage with a flat roof. In 1983, a previous homeowner added on to the garage to the south to that 6.4-foot setback, which was legal at the time, because at that time, it was a minimum five-foot setback required, and therefore, the extension of it on that main floor does conform to our alternate setback standard. And then in 1995, an owner at that time wanted to put living space above the garage. It's a flat roof, they were having issues with water. They also felt that it was a logical alternative to add on to the house, add living space on to the house. It did go in front of the zoning board, that's who heard those requests at that time, and it was approved, so there's living space above the garage that at that time should have been 10 feet away, plus six inches for each foot average, the wall height exceeds 15 feet. Currently, the requirement would just be a standard 10-foot setback. So the area in question that we're reviewing, again, is the highlighted pink area that is the structural roof area that overlaps that required 10-foot setback. It will maintain the existing setback that was approved in 1995 for the variance above the garage, and it allows to have that dormer-living space tie in with a roofline below. I guess the alternative would be perhaps just to have a dormer extension with a higher roofline and not have the roofline there. The homeowners had indicated that they would like to have a gable end face the front. Currently, the home is rather flat, and it's pretty wide, and this was their, in their opinion, they felt that this would be a more attractive view from the street. So the primary issue is, is the proposed variance justified? Will it relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use of the property? Staff does believe that the proposed variance is reasonable, given that the applicant is seeking a design that ties in the dormer with the garage area below with a continuous sloping roofline that is structural and not habitable space. The proposed habitable living space, again, will be 10.9 feet away from the proposed, from the side lot line, and further from the lot line than the minimum 10-foot sideyard setback that is required. Second-floor living space already exists at the proposed 6.4-foot setback, which was deemed appropriate in 1995 by the city with the granting of a variance. The practical difficulty is caused by the existing location of the home. The first level is non-conforming, and the second story received a variance. The addition is consistent with that approved variance. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly-zoned property? A unique circumstance is that the garage was built under a previous ordinance and conformed. It becomes very difficult when you have a home that was built in 1940, there are some non-conforming conditions, there are some situations where there's been a variance granted, it becomes really difficult to try to add on to a structure and maintain it and keep it livable for our current standards, given the situation that it's in, setbacks that it has. I do remember at the time, in 95, when the variance board was considering the addition above the garage, there was some discussion that the house does back up to Minnehaw Creek. And they did express concern that it's preferable not to try to add on to a back of the house and continue sort of the erosion of people's views into the rear yard. There were a lot of concerns, and there always are a lot of concerns, as it relates to views towards a creek, and in that situation, there was some discussion on that. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The proposed home will not alter the essential character of the existing neighborhood. The proposed addition would complement the existing neighborhood homes, and the addition would not be any closer to the side lot line than the garage as it exists today. There would be less impacting, given that the roofline that is adjacent to the sideyard slopes away from the sideyard, unlike the addition that was done back in 1995, where you have a flat gabled end facing the sideyard. Staff recommends approval of the variance. Based on the following findings, the proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district and complies with all the standards, with the exception of sideyard setback of the non-habitable roof area. The proposed additions are appropriate in size and scale for the lot, and the improvements will enhance the property. The practical difficulty is caused by the existing location of the home. The first level is non-conforming, the second story received a variance, the addition is consistent with the variance and also tying in with that non-conforming setback on the lower level. There is a practical difficulty in meeting the ordinance requirements, and there are circumstances unique to the property due to an imposed sideyard setback and the existence of an existing living space at the proposed non-conforming sideyard setback. The variance, if approved, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The addition will blend in with the existing architecture of the home that was originally built in 1940. Staff would recommend approval of the variance subject to the following conditions. The survey date stamped June 29th, 2015, and building plans and elevations date stamped June 16th, 2015. There was an engineering memo that came to a little bit later in an email fashion, and the engineering department will review the plans as it relates to grading, drainage, and erosion control at permit application, but the initial review for variance application indicated that for the summary of review, there were no concerns with the plans as submitted. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Haker? Solsom.
Yeah, Chris, so for the 1995 variance, there was that condition to install the two casement windows. Were those installed? Is that what I'm seeing? This, were they?
Yes. If you look at this elevation, when it, I was there, and the discussion didn't center around the garage portion, that was already there. The discussion centered around the second-floor addition. And you can see on this elevation, there are two windows here. There's also some much smaller windows there. This was what was approved at the time, a building permit application. And the reason why this window is so far over towards the back part of the house is that, and I think, I might be able to, the owner that lived in the house at the south, just directly south at the time, I think you can see it here, that house was a story and a half, and they didn't want to have the two windows, you know, looking at each other, one looking down at the other. So the previous homeowners worked together, and that was the solution they came up with, because they wanted, the homeowner to the south wanted some privacy, but the owner of the subject property wanted some windows, and it was a condition of variance.
Understood. So that condition of approval was met?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Forrest?
To follow up on that, when, at the time that variance was granted, the concern seems to have been, according to the minutes of the building mass versus privacy issues or anything else, and it actually says that the two windows should be installed in the garage wall, which I would take to be that lower-story wall. So I'm just, I'm having trouble getting my head around that solution and the contrast with the minutes of the zoning board from that day. I mean, was it, you were there?
The garage was existing, and they were putting an addition above the garage. And so the discussion, they weren't requiring the homeowner to put windows in an existing portion that wasn't under consideration for remodeling or an addition. They were just looking at the addition above. So it's probably poorly stated or written.
Okay.
But it was really addressing the new addition that's above the existing garage that had been there since 1983.
Okay.
So they were looking at windows on that side, because there were no windows on the garage on the lower level.
Okay. Well, and that is the way it's stated, they should be in the garage wall. And then, so basically, the planning, or the zoning board of appeals at the time, they were concerned about the massing, but the neighbor, the next-door neighbor was more concerned about the effect on privacy and things like that at the time?
At the time, when they had to put windows in it, yes. Then the neighbor to the south was concerned about placement, and I, probably why they ended up with the decorative octagonal windows, too? I don't know.
Thank you.
Question?
Thank you. Could you, Chris, could you go to, that's page A11 again?
Help me out. Which one is that?
It's on elevation, nothing highlighted.
Oh, okay. This one?
Yeah. Can you walk me through on this page, the changes that are occurring? Is the light, is the light the existing structure in the dark, the changes?
This is the addition coming towards the front yard.
Yeah, and then behind that, behind that, is that, that's existing?
And that's existing. If I go back to, I'm going to see if I can.
Those are existing windows behind there.
Okay.
Here's a photograph of the house. I think there's a few changes to it. This isn't all photograph, but it shows you that the underlying drawing that you were seeing is actually this portion of it. And it's kind of a bad angle, because the roofline is lower than the main house, if you can kind of see that. But it's extending towards the street with that gable.
And is it, is the addition going to then have the roofline, will the roofline of the addition match the larger part of the house, or will it stay, to match the roofline of the right side of the house there?
I think probably the side elevation might help out with that. It's lower. Here's the existing, this is the 1983 addition above, I'm sorry, the 1995 addition above the 1983 garage below, and this is the roofline that will tie in with that existing roofline, which is, this is above the master bedroom that exists today, so it's lower than the main part of the house. And then you have a gable that will be facing the front yard, if that helps?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you. And then the, the purpose of the variance is that pink purplish area, and that's more for aesthetic than for functional use? Is that correct?
Well, it allows this type of roofline to tie that upper level to the garage below. That's, this is the roof framing plan. I'm trying to see if, this, there might be a better... We're referring to the knee wall area right here, and it just, it allows a continuous roofline.
Mirror this.
The slope portion of the roof to face the sideyard, and then the gable will be facing the front. Whereas on the existing addition that came in on 95 above the garage, you have that flat end gable facing the sideyard.
And so then the issue is, without that roofline on the side bordering the neighbors, then it would almost be kind of an odd thing. Like, if you were to stop the gabeling at the 10-foot line, the garage would still be, you'd have a roofline like this, and the garage would still, you'd have like three feet.
You'd, yeah.
Flat.
There's always, you know, how do you tie it in? How do you make it look good? It's part of the structural roof area that continues this roof above the new living space that's centered, and the garage below.
Right. And, right. And without it, though, it would be very...
You could have some very interesting solutions. I guess I...
Interesting solution. All right. Thanks, Chris.
Chris, just one question. So the, it meets the side, or excuse me, the front yard setback, correct?
Yes.
So that part facing out meets?
Yes.
It's that piece that is not 10 feet away, right?
They did the average along the block between intersections.
But the sideyard is because it's not 10 feet?
Well, the sideyard, if there hadn't been an existing legally non-conforming structure... Well, the side yard, if there hadn't been an existing legally non-conforming structure, you wouldn't be able to calculate.
Right, you're already at 6.6 feet or whatever it is.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest?
I'm having difficulty with the, the size of the type on here. How much further from the existing front facade of the house will this addition extend out? Because it is partially absorbed by the house.
The average on the block is 28.6 feet, the proposed is 29.
No, I mean the actual addition, the structure?
Oh, I'm sorry, nine feet four inches is, is how it will extend out beyond what's existing there today.
Okay, and then the addition itself is, is how deep? Or is that the maximum?
That's the addition.
Okay.
It's nine feet four inches from the front face of the garage.
Right. Okay, because the house actually currently, it looks like on here, extends beyond the garage a little bit and that's why I was asking what the net effect would be.
So the graduate extends farther than the front of the house?
Yeah, it looks like it's a couple feet deeper.
This illustrates it a little bit better. You can see that this is the front face of the garage and the nine foot four inch extension.
See on that left side, the house itself extends further out there than...
Well, there's a front portico with columns that it's going to be about even up with to the new addition, about.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Commissioner Lee.
Okay, Chris, I just wanted to check on, on this idea of the setback. I actually drove that street and it curves significantly. So initially, typically when we look at setbacks, it's to try to drive some type of uniformity along the street. And that, that is sort of the basis of, of having a uniform setback. This average setback you said was nine, 29 something for that block?
28.6.
Can you tell me how many homes that is approximately and on that block? Or do we have a graphic that shows that from what is, what's considered the block?
Was the average setback line for the buildings on both sides of it or for the block? Usually it's on both sides of it, doesn't it?
It's for the block.
For the block?
Correct.
One side?
One side of the block between intersections, not across the street, but along that side of the block between intersections. So I don't know if I can...
So you just run your finger across from one end to the other, the homes that that was an average of?
Here.
Uh huh. Okay. All right, so it, it does curve significantly and the average of that was 29.8 feet.
28.9, 28.6.
28.6 feet, okay. In this particular case, this home on the, let's see, on the site plan is showing that the adjacent homes, or the option is to, to take the average of the two homes on either side, is that correct? So the home on the west is 38, I can't read that, 36.2 feet, okay, from the property line on the front. The home to the east is 32.2 feet. So this addition will now be 29 feet from the front property line. So that's, that's, in, in this case, I think significantly different from either's, of the homes on either side. But as you pointed out, it's within the average of that block. So that's why there's no variance required as far as them building out to that point. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The owner has their choice. They can either average the homes, just like the last request, they can average the homes on either side, or they can average them along the block between intersections. In that particular situation, there were only four homes affecting that house on France Avenue. Unfortunately for them, when they averaged them, it was worse than trying to do either side, but it still didn't help them.
Right.
They were still, they still needed a variance. In this particular situation, the homeowners did believe that initially they would need a variance because they looked at the homes on either side. They had their surveyor do the average along the block between intersections and the average came out to be 28.6 feet. And that is, they are building within the required setback.
The average for the block. But had they just chose to do the average of the two homes, they would not be, that would not work out, not be as favorable to them. They wouldn't choose that. I mean, but they have a choice. Is that true?
Yeah. I mean, those are the requirements.
Right, okay.
You can average them or...
Yep, just wanted to confirm. Okay. And then, let me see, okay, so in the pink area, what you're saying is that there's no question about how far it comes out towards the front property line. However, now we have a sideline, side yard setback issue. The original house is at the 6.5, was it 6.5 feet?
Four, 6.4.
6.4. That was a variance that was approved previously based on where the existing garage was. They actually, that was where the garage was, so they put a second story on top. It was non-conform, it was probably conforming as, at one time.
It was conforming at the time. It was actually further away than it had to be. It could be five feet away.
Okay, okay, so it's not conforming now, but this is a new addition. But they're just extending off of where the wall is now?
Actually, the living space is in set 10.9 feet.
Yeah, but the, the house is coming out following that line.
Oh, correct, yes. On the, on the main floor, yes.
And then on the second story, you, you are having that variance issue with the living space. You, again, we're looking at it again, needs to be a 10-foot setback.
Correct.
And in fact, they have more than that, they have 10 feet.
10.9.
10.9, okay. So they're asking, the only variance issue we have to concern ourselves with is that second story area?
Highlighted in pink.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Carr.
I just have a quick question about the sidewall. And refresh my memory again what our sidewall articulation ordinance requires and if that's applicable here?
Well, it would not be applicable because it's the extension and that's all we look at when we're looking at an addition to a house. If it were a brand new house, we'd look at the entire thing. But if it's an addition to a house, we can't really look at what's already existing. We only look at what's being proposed. And so they're adding on 9.4 feet of length to that sidewall. If it's 30, if it's going in excess of 30 feet, then they would need to add some sort of sidewall articulation.
So it's a 30 feet, that's the sidewall articulation?
Right.
Trigger point?
Yes.
And what's the footage from the back of the original garage to the front of the new extension? Do you know what that distance is?
The existing width, or depth, pardon me, of the garage is 20.2 and then they're adding on 9.33, so just a little under 30 feet.
So it's pretty close to 30. One of the things, I'm just looking at this and it's not a very attractive view from the side of the house. But that's why I was asking the questions as to whether the sidewall articulation ordinance applies, although certainly we could take that into account in the variance as a condition.
That's, they took it into consideration 20 years ago.
Right. All right, thank you.
Anything further? Thanks. So if the applicant would want to come forth and give us any information, feel free.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission and staff. My name is Lisa Ramsey. My husband, David Ramsey. Our son, Si. Daughter, Quinn. My husband is a lifelong Udine resident and together we have lived at our current home at 5425 Woodcrest Drive for over 15 years. Thank you for hearing our request tonight for a 3.6-foot side yard setback variance for a portion of the roof structure on our proposed addition. Planning staff has done a very thorough job of presenting the information. Thank you. At this time, I would like to take the opportunity to provide some pertinent background information. Even though we are just tonight appearing before the commission, our variance process began quite some time ago. The need for a mudroom and reworked garage space with a new driveway has become increasingly warranted in our home as the years pass and our family grows. In the spring of 2014, we were finally able to bring a set of plans for our proposed addition to our neighbors for review. At that time, we believed that we would possibly need a front and a side yard setback variance and we're seeking support from our neighbors, especially the two adjacent neighbors. Our proposed project was supported by all neighbors that we approached with the exception of our neighbor to the east, Christine Donatelli, whose current opposition letter is included with the staff report that you have. Over the next year, we worked with our architect and contractor to explore any other feasible options for our addition. In the end, we returned to the original plans as the most viable, the most responsible, and the most attractive option for us and for the neighborhood. We submitted a variance application on the 16th of this past June and were set to appear before this commission on the 22nd of July. Upon further review, the planning department staff determined that we did not actually need a variance for our proposed project and we withdrew our application. The next day, Ms. Donatelli filed an administrative appeal of the planning staff's interpretation of city code regarding our case. This appeal was set to be heard by the commission on the 12th of August. Before that date arrived, Ms. Donatelli and her attorney sent a correspondence dated the 4th of August to the planning department citing the city's determination of our case as unlawful and exceeding the scope of the city's authority and contending that this unlawful determination has denied Ms. Donatelli her right to a hearing on the merits of the findings necessary to grant a variance in our case. Her attorney offered to withdraw the administrative appeal if staff were to require us to apply for variance and appear before the planning commission. This information was relayed to us by the planning staff with a recommendation from the city attorney and we resubmitted our variance application. The request now amended to only a 3.6-foot side yard setback for the roof and attic structure above the garage space. That brings us to tonight. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, our foremost desire tonight is that the commission will be able to focus solely on the relevant facts directly relating to our variance request. These facts are clearly outlined in the staff report. Our ultimate goal is to remedy a significant need on our property while also aesthetically improving our home. We wish to do this in the most responsible and least disruptive manner possible, not only for our own property, but also for our entire neighborhood. Our proposed plans currently have the support of all of the neighbors we've contacted with the exception of Ms. Donatelli. In regard to her opposition letter and that of her attorney that is included in your staff report, we are prepared to address her points specifically if the commission wishes. However, we hope that the presented information and the staff recommendation will be more than sufficient grounds for the commission to determine that our variance request should be granted. We are happy to answer any questions as homeowners and we have with us our architect, Phil Johnson, and our contractor, Brian Sorensen, to address any technical questions. Again, thank you for your time and consideration and we respectfully ask that the commission grant our request.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Are there any questions? Commissioner Lee?
Thank you for your statement. It was very helpful and I, I do believe that you are correct in saying that we are going to be focusing on the relevant facts. Obviously, you're here for a variance and we, we can only review it in light of that. I know we have received a lot of correspondence. In some ways, all of that is irrelevant in some sense. But my question for you is, you had mentioned that you had explored this with your architect and had arrived this, to this conclude, as the conclusion that it's the best possible arrangement. Can you tell me sort of what was the outcome of your exploration of going off the back?
I can address that in layperson terms and then perhaps my contractor and architect could add some additional information.
And my reason for asking is that in my mind, I, I do want to make sure I understand what the practical difficulty is. So I want to understand it from you as a homeowner.
Okay, as a homeowner, I would, I would start with saying that the proposed option, and one that we did explore, of adding on to the back of our house, we found to be not viable. The fact of the matter is that our yard behind our garage slopes drastically and directly to the Minnehaha Creek. Our entire backyard, including the area directly behind the garage and the area on the west side of our house, which had been indicated as perhaps being an access area for construction vehicles. The backyard and this area on the west supports many mature trees and other plantings. The aerial photo of the lots on our side of Woodcrest clearly show where the original tree canopy surrounding the creek has been preserved and where it's been removed. I think you have that in your staff report pictures, but maybe I could show that as well? Do I do that in the middle? Oops, yes?
Yeah, you'll have to take a microphone with you also.
This is the picture that I'm referring to that shows from, from above where the original tree canopy along the creek has been preserved and where it has not. We greatly value the original wooded nature of our creekside lot and we seek to preserve these trees whenever we can. Many trees would need, many mature trees would need to come down in order for an addition to be constructed on the back side of our garage as well as for any construction equipment to be able to come into that area. I do have some additional pictures that I could show of that area that may help to This is a picture of the west side of our house. I believe it was stated as 12.5 feet of access area. This is the side of our house. Right about here on the side of the trees is our lot line. As you can see, this is all mature tree area going down. If we look, as we go down the slope from our backyard, looking up, up here are the trees that we just looked at. This is approximately our lot line, the house next to us. We see retaining wall here, retaining wall here, mature trees, and the steep slope. That is the only proposed area of access to our backyard. If we take a look at some of our backyard, we can see the creek that borders the entire length of our backyard. You can see the wooded and shaded area, which is our lot. And next to us in the lighter area is our neighbor's lot. So this is the type of tree canopy that we are trying to preserve. I think that I also... So, in addition to the mature trees that would need to be removed for any type of construction as well as bringing in vehicles or materials, we also wish to avoid any unnecessary or inappropriate runoff into the creek that might result from construction or from additional surface covering in the rear of the house. So to us, this is the most responsible thing in respect to being good stewards of our creekside lot and the mature trees in our area. difficulties.
I think that's fine.
Is that sufficient?
Yep. That was great. Thank you.
You there, Commissioner Forrest?
It's not sufficient for me yet. What I'm wondering, you talk about the canopy coverage in the back, but we're looking at it, I'm just looking at this little similar nine-foot rectangle, nine-foot deep rectangle in the back behind the garage. How many mature trees are in that nine-foot rectangle? You have a flagstone walkway and a concrete, I don't know if it's patio or whatever, covering fifty percent of what that area would be for the actual addition. I understand you're talking about construction access and things too, but I'm just wondering...
Are you referring to the area that was stated as eight feet of level ground that a mudroom could be built on?
I'm just, all I did was draw a little rectangle about the same size in the back, and I'm wondering, you know, if that doesn't really affect the canopy beyond, so that's why I'm wondering.
Okay.
I'd like more detail on the specific issues related to that part.
Okay. I think from what I can say as homeowner is that we do have trees bordering that area in between our lot lines, but perhaps regarding the slope and that particular area, our contractor would be better able to address that. Yes?
My name is Brian Sorensen. We've done a lot of work on the Ramses' home over the last fifteen years, and that area of the house has some rock retaining walls back there that would have to have a lot of excavation for the footings for that room, and a lot of fill would have to come out of that area, and it just did not, with the layout of the twenty-foot, the existing garage is only twenty feet wide, and that is part of the problem with getting into the garage and opening car doors and accessing, once you're in there, that would not be, what we felt wouldn't be accomplished with that type of a rear addition. And also, the rear of the house is, we only have about three feet of access on the right side, so everything would have to come around the other side of the house. Yep. And basically, I think there's about, I'm going to guess, a twenty-foot drop from that garage elevation.
It looks like nine feet on the contour map here for going out to about the end of where the existing house is, so it's about fifty percent maybe grade.
You have other questions for the applicants? Thanks, there may be something coming up later, so it doesn't look like you're going real far, so. So next up, this is a public hearing, and I want to mention that everyone's three minutes of time. Look at the, you'll see the red and the yellow and the green lights come up. When the yellow, you're about thirty seconds left. Red, you're done at that point. I just want to, I see a fair amount of people here. I just want to point out that there's smart people up here, so if you're going to say the same thing many, many times, just keep that in mind as you come forth for everyone's time, so appreciate that. If you want to come forth and state your name.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the planning commission, my name is Jacob Steen with Larkin Hoffman, and I represent Ms. Donatelli, adjacent property owner at 5427 Woodcrest Drive. This application is a variance upon a variance that will result in a substantial amount of massing and encroachment into the setbacks and adversely affect the adjacent property. The proposed addition would further, would actually further reduce the existing setback by one foot beyond the existing encroachment due to the eve, as well as projecting more than nine feet into that front yard. The orientation of the roof line really doesn't soften the massing here, unfortunately, because the proposed fourteen-twelve roof pitch, which is very steep, rises more than twenty-seven feet above Ms. Donatelli's grade of her front yard. So this substantial mass will not only have a visual impact going to block access to light and air to her property, but also going to block views to the west and increase runoff because of this added projection onto her property and because of the rearrangement of the roof pitch. As described in our correspondence, we don't feel that there's any practical difficulties existent on this property. The slope at the rear of the property, while at the very rear, may be unbuildable, but behind the garage, it's not unbuildable. The applicant's home, in fact, is largely built on this slope. Moreover, relying on the existing location of the structure, due in large part because of the 1995 variance, to now justify yet another variance is nonsensical. And using this logic, it would follow that you could end up with an endless cycle of back-to-back variances, which would be arbitrary and capricious. Our correspondence includes the minutes of the 1995 variance approval, and it sounds like some of you have read through those, and I would encourage you to all do that, and you can appreciate how difficult that original decision was, due in large part to the same exact issues of the massing. In addition, the condition of approval was that casement windows would be attached or installed in that sidewall, and it's important to read through those and understand that it wasn't in the second floor, it wasn't in the habitable portion, it was in the garage wall, and that was the exact terms of those conditions of approval. As we've described in our correspondence, the application does not meet the findings required under Minnesota law to grant a variance, and for these reasons, we strongly encourage and respectfully request the planning commission deny the application and direct the applicant to come forward with something that does meet the city code. But at a minimum, we request that the planning commission require the applicant to mitigate the issues of massing and runoff. The height and pitch of the roof should be reduced to ease the adverse effects of the massing. The stormwater should be drained all the way to the curb to the right of way to avoid the runoff, and the architectural, some architectural features, some articulation should be installed on that east building wall to ensure that we break up the massing and comply with those original approvals. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Ms. Donatelli is here, and she would like to address the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 5427 Woodcrest Drive. I am the east side of budding neighbor and the one most impacted by this two-story front yard garage addition. I oppose the variance. This is not a modest addition. My home is situated on a slope below the Ramses' and already tucked fourteen feet behind the garage base. Now they want to bring that garage forward nine and a half feet and add a twenty-three-foot tall severely pitched roof less than six feet off my property line. This creates a twenty-three-foot-long massive garage wall sitting atop a four-foot-high retaining wall visible to all neighbors. It will block my light, block my views, and cast a large shadow on my front yard below. I submitted several photos to show you my current views and perspective. The roof is too tall, too close, and too steep, and projects out even further into the side yard than the existing garage. It's pitched just a few feet off my lot line. In a hard rainfall, stormwater can project past the gutters and down into my mulch gardens. A variance created this towering garage in the first place. The condition of adding two casement windows was intended to break up the long garage wall, according to the meeting minutes. Please read them. This new variance expands the structural massing further forward and into the interior side yard with no mention of the adverse impacts. I want to know why the other viable options weren't taken here. Why can't this mudroom addition be built on the backside of their house where there is several feet of level grade, undeveloped space, and where it won't harm neighbors and block views? The location does not impose practical difficulties. There is access for building equipment from the west side and through the garage. They would only need to build back nine feet. The trees they are referring to are mostly scrub trees, the trees they were referring to having to remove are mostly scrub trees. In fact, one of them is a dead onion wood that needs to be removed before it falls on my home. I submitted a photo of that flagstone wall area, and that is overgrown with mostly scrub trees. The mature trees they are referring to are not in the line of construction. My home was built on that very same slope three years ago and met all the setback requirements, was in compliance with all the setback requirements. And just to mention, they also have, the Ramses built an eight-hundred-square-foot patio deck on that same slope, and it projects back even further than my home. A second story is not necessary for a garage mudroom addition. The roof should be significantly reduced to ease the impacts. It seems to me no thought was given to aesthetics on the east side wall. Why weren't design features like windows added to break up the nearly thirty-foot-long massing?
If you could wrap up pretty quick, please.
I'm just about done. I just want to mention that this front yard addition would intrusively project out an additional five-point-six feet closer toward the street than the thirty-four-point-two-foot average front street setback for the abutting properties, which is significant. And improvements can be made to this property without the need for this variance, so I respectfully ask that you vote no.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Breth. I live at 5429 Woodcrest Drive, and I've lived there for twenty-seven years. So we've seen both the previous generation, and I'm speaking, I guess, in support. I think this is a beautiful addition. I think the facade is going to be a great blend of the gable line, I think, looks beautiful. And I think it's ironic that the one person opposing this is...
This is a view of what's... If you could take a microphone, please, if you're going to show something up there.
This is ironic that, is that right?
Hello? Hello?
Doesn't sound like a sign, Jordan.
I just thought it's ironic. This is, we're on the other side of Ms. Donatelli's. This is two years ago. This is what we live with now, in addition, a four-foot to nine-foot fill going back that took all of our daylight, all of our afternoon daylight, right up to the lot line, and some places going over the lot line. And this is now our dog, our kennel run that sits six feet outside our kitchen window here. We have a kennel run. So I just think it's ironic to see the opposition when we are loomed over by a huge addition that came in, so.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Donatelli. I live at 5200 France Avenue, and Christine is my daughter. When she built her house several years ago, she complied with all the codes. There was quite a bit of soil correction to build what she built and added retaining walls. We asked the builder if we could get a variance, and he says, "There's no way." We had to move the top of the house in to comply with the variances. And I want to show you some photos. Can I take the mic and...
Yeah, take the mic again.
Can you see this here?
Put it right in the middle of the table.
Right, okay.
Right there. There you go.
Here's a photo of the existing house, and they want to add nine and a half feet to the front of it. Here's another photo. Nine and a half feet to the front of that. And I feel that they can build to the back of that. They can even go through the back side of the garage to do their building. They can put the floor on posts or columns and support it that way. They don't have to build a footing. There's plenty of houses or additions that are built like that. So I think that adding that much to that side of the house, and the looks of these pictures, I think it's, it's just something that shouldn't have to happen. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mark Swenson. I live at 5501 Dever Drive, a couple of houses away, on a different street. I've lived in Indiana for thirty years. I've been an architect for thirty-eight years. I've been involved in hundreds of variance cases. I just want to say that I support the variance, along with all the other neighbors, and that I believe I agree with the staff report. I disagree with the attorney's letter in almost every respects as either not true or wild exaggeration, with one exception, the east side is ugly. Windows should go in. That's clearly, I hundred percent agree with him on that. So I just want to be brief and say, we could have fifteen neighbors up here who all wrote letters, but I guess I'll represent those people and say that I absolutely support this.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson.
My name is Jim Gross and I live at 5513 Park Place, and I am a neighbor of the Ramses'. I'm here to speak in favor of their variance request. I am a frequent walker of this area and walking by their house, and I actually took the plans and drawings, and I totally agree with staff, this will fit in the neighborhood. And I realize this just happens to be one of those cases where there's a disagreement of one neighbor, and it's a very, you know, puts a lot of tension, a lot of pressure on everybody. Therefore, I am requesting that you vote in favor of this variance request, and again, thank you for your time. Please be respectful also of the trees and neighborhood canopy they're trying to preserve, unlike other properties that have just come in and cut everything down. Thank you again, and again, please vote in favor of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
My name's Paul Mayner. I live at 5432 Woodcrest Drive, and I am here to speak in favor of the applicant's request for a variance. Got a couple of quick pictures that I'd also like to show. Yep.
Maybe we should keep that on the table for a while.
This is the condition of the home that was previously located on the site prior to Ms. Donatelli's construction of her home. There's been commentary here regarding massing and blockage of views, and I just wanted to compare the condition as to what actually was built. And I tend to agree with Mr. Brethheim's commentary regarding the irony of opposing the addition that the Ramses are seeking from a, both a massing and a view blockage perspective. So I would ask that you consider these images. I think that there is a reasonableness standard here that also needs to be contemplated, and I would hope that you vote in favor of their request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My name is Phil Johnson. I'm the architect on this project. The start of the project was to try to help the Ramses get the interior of their garage large enough so they could put the two cars in. They can presently get two cars in, but to open the doors of those two cars in is very, very, very tight because of the configuration of the stairway into the house that is on one side of the garage and really limits very much what can be done there. The garage presently has two doors on the front that I think, seven and a half feet? That are seven and a half feet wide. Each of their cars, as long as they pull the mirrors in... Each of their cars, as long as they pull the mirrors in, can be put into there, but that's how narrow the space is. The one option to, to get room to open the doors a little bit more was to pull the whole garage face forward, something like fifteen feet, so that both doors could get open. That was in violation of, of the setback requirements. We were going to pull it ten foot at one point. That would allow at least the back doors to open for the kids easily and it would provide the same obstacle for who's ever driving the car. They'd either have to slide across the seat or continue to squeeze through the space between the car and the wall at that point. So the whole idea of pulling the garage forward as far as we possibly could was originated with that, to get a little more doorway, a little more area to swing the doors of the car open. With that, they wanted very much to have a mudroom in the back with their growing children, having more things that they bring home and take from the car into the house, things that don't have to go all the way into the house, places to unload from the car before it goes into the house and so on. So the mudroom was placed on the back where the stairway to the rest of the house is, so they could have access to that. We looked at a lot of different things as far as the front elevation of the, of the house. The roof structure that we wound up with is, is a structure that spreads across the full width of the garage addition. The roof portion of that is probably twelve or fourteen feet tall, just the roof structure. Under that is the garage door. In order to break up that front elevation structure, we put an eyebrow across the front of it, over the garage door itself, to try to soften that view from the street. We at one time had some of the face material wrapped around the side of the, of the house a little way to assist in breaking up the side elevation of the house, but because of this variance, side yard variance, we've, we've begun to think that we have to pull that away, remove that. We were going to pull that back about three or three and a half feet. It could be added back on if we could somehow get the agreement that that could be done. We have gutters coming down off the side of this roof that will pick up the water and bring it down in, down, down, down spouts and into an underground system that will bring the water from those gutters and downspouts out toward the street.
If you could wrap up, please.
That is on the plan. Pardon?
If you could wrap up, please, your time is done.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We also looked at the additions to the backs, backside of the house and along with the difficulty of getting around the backside and the fact that it would not allow the, the need for the wider garage spaces, we began to just come back toward the addition to the front. Thank you very much and I'm sorry about going over.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Julie Donatelli. I'm Christine's sister and I just want to speak to a few points...
Could you give your address, please?
My address?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I live, I own a house in Edina and I also, and I don't, I don't care to give the address. Do I need to do that?
You're supposed to. For the record of who's testifying.
Okay. I own a home on sixty-five oh-nine Willow in Edina, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you.
I reside in another home as well, though. I have another home. Someone referred to a kennel rung on the side of her house. That's a fence. My sister has a Shih Tzu. It's not a kennel rung, it's, it's a fence on the side of her house, like a lot of people have. I also, I know my sister and I looked at the front yard variance setback versus a side yard variance setback and I think the front, I believe there's still a front yard setback problem. The fact that they can go up and down the whole neighborhood and this is a street that curves twice and they're using those two curved points to sway the average so that they can build further out. I, I guess I didn't rehearse this, so, but there, there is something to that, that I think the whole point of going up and down the street and taking an average would be so that if it's unfair, if the two houses just happen to be next to you different, you could, the intent, I think, is so that people are all straight, all somewhat straight and because of the turns, it's highly sways the front yard setback. And really, just one final point, I, I think a lot of the neighbors support it and the one neighbor that it affects the most is my sister's house and that is why she's in opposition to it. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. So I'll take it back up to, for discussion on planning commission at this point. If anyone wants to dive in, this is...
I have a procedural question.
Certainly.
Can we ask questions of some of the people who spoke? For instance, I have a question for the architect.
He was with the applicant, I mean, that, that would be acceptable.
Okay.
I, I had some comments too, just kind of questions back to them also, so maybe I would pose it that way.
Pose it to the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I could do that anytime, so I just wondered.
If you feel free to go now.
Go now, okay. Okay, so if the applicant could return back to the, the podium there. I had a question, if, if, at least in thinking about some of the issues that were raised, does the architect have any ideas for articulating that east side? Is my question. Had that been looked at and thoughts on that?
And would you like to hear a response directly from the architect?
I would, if he, if that's, if he's the better person to speak, yeah.
Thank you. Sir?
You can stay here.
Okay.
Most people, when they're doing a garage of any sort, are concerned about security in that. So I didn't really want to put windows in that that could be looked into, lights left on in the garage accidentally and people could look into that. So windows, or large windows in particular, would not be desirous at all. As I mentioned, I had proposed, and I think it's still in the drawing, that the face material of the house would wrap around the corner. That was about as far as we had gone. There's, there...
And what is that material? Is that...
It's a, a irregular stone.
So it will be different from the siding?
It will not be horizontal siding if you allow us to do it.
Okay, that's different. That's articulation. And the roof material, what is that going to be?
Asphalt shingles.
Asphalt shingle, which will probably match the existing house, kind of gray?
Correct.
All right, and then I, my sense is that that's not a flat plain, it's pitched. So actually, for about, you know, ten feet up now, that surface is sloping away now from that property line, correct?
Definitely, and, and from the adjacent grass line, you know, you're going to be seeing up that slope.
Okay.
You'll definitely see shingles that you'll be seeing up that slope.
Correct. Okay. That was my two questions. Thank you.
I just had a kind of, so the question or the concern on the runoff, you mentioned that's, how is that going to work with the new area? Was, you said it was coming the downspout and then an underdrain towards the street? Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what's happening there? Okay. And then I was going to ask the same thing on articulation along that piece on the runoff. Yeah, I guess that'd be the articulation in the massing piece. Thanks. Commissioner Carr?
I have a question for you as well. Having to do side wall articulation. You know, you mentioned that you didn't have a preference for putting windows at the garage level, although I noticed that both, the, the design that I see here does not have windows in your garage doors. The two neighbors on both sides of you do have windows in the garage doors, now they're higher up. So having some natural light in the garage is actually a good feature to have. It would possibly add some articulation. And my understanding is that you've got, is it the stone facing that's in the front of the house that's going to come around on the lower portion of the garage there? Okay. And then what about some articulation, at least visually, by the addition of some windows on the second story? Because again, you've got a, a bigger mass that's being looked at, so you have the home and then you have the, the reslanted roof. Have you considered putting some additional windows in there? Right now, there's just those tiny little peepholes.
No, I didn't really get involved in designing additional stuff in the room upstairs.
And that is a master bedroom there?
Yes.
So, you know, I don't know if you would consider adding windows or again, I'm trying to come up with some articulation to that side because that is facing the neighbors, it's closer and it's, it's a larger mass, it's coming close to what we consider the trigger point for articulation. So if you would perhaps consider adding some windows there, I think that would improve visually...
Sure.
...the look of that side of the building.
In my mind, articulation would also include the varying heights of a building. Not that, you know, by bringing forward is something that's an eight or nine foot elevation is a breakup of the whole thing, but it does change the face of that significantly enough in terms of what it looks like to, let me call it soften, that tall vertical wall somewhat.
No, I would agree, the, the roof lines, the different heights of the roof lines does add some articulation to it, but again, visually, I think some window treatment on that side of the home would be, I think, helpful.
We can study it and see what would, see what would be done, could be done. A lot of it is going to depend upon my aesthetic view of what it is and the owner's aesthetic view of what it should be.
I think the point is that we, we're desiring some articulation on there, I think, is what it added.
On the east wall.
On the east wall.
And if I could speak to that.
We all have opinions, but our opinion is, or people's, that it doesn't right now, so...
I, I think that I could speak saying that when we moved into this house, that is how the east wall looked. It was constructed that way in nineteen ninety-five. We are open to suggestions of the commission, but it has always been our intent during the time of our construction to add what you might call these softening elements where we can. It is part of, such as landscaping, it is part of our, a broader plan that we had to take advantage of the construction time to do many other exterior maintenance issues as well as other exterior cosmetic upgrades. For example, replacing the shutters along our front windows and painting the railing above our front door. These are all exterior elements that we had always intended to address during the time of our construction, to take advantage of that time and have always wanted to, we agreed, soften that wall that was existing as of nineteen ninety-five. I think that it is important to note that, that was an existing condition when Ms. Donatelli purchased her lot and when she decided to build and design her house. Our elevation, our existing house structure and the grade change between our two lots were all existing at that time and have not changed.
Thank you. Commissioner Forrest?
The height of the, of this new gable end that faces the front, that was determined in order to match ceiling heights in the bedroom, I imagine? Is that correct?
That was definitely part of it. There's also a factor of matching the existing roof slopes so that it didn't keep, especially from the street view, keep changing to all kinds of different roof slopes on the base.
But that's pretty much just the gables, the window gables, though, on the front part.
Yes.
So really, it's not as crucial that it matched those existing roof slopes, if it's the only major roof slope that you see from the street, right?
I, I feel quite strongly that it's important to match all of the architectural elements of the existing house when you're doing an addition like this or it looks like an addition.
I, I, I understand that. I think, I think it's a preference too. I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's a, that's, the height is, if the height is an issue, I, personally, I prefer matching roof slopes too, I agree with that, but I was wondering if there was any consideration of a shallower roof, I guess, on the front? And if that was doable with the existing ceiling heights in the house?
I would address as the perspective of the homeowner that if the concern of the roof height is actually part of the opposition, really, I don't think it's going to matter what our roof height will be in regard to if our neighbor is going to oppose this or not. In general, I think that she is opposed to the entire addition and opposed to the east side that she views from her lot that is already existing. That is how I understand her opposition letter. So I don't think that the slope of the roof, how high it is, is really going to make much difference to the opposition.
Could I just wanted to get that in the record, that that was addressed?
Okay.
Commissioner Emmeroff?
Thank you very much. I, I may have more of a comment than a question, but the applicant can respond if she wishes. One thing it seems to me in going through and listening to everything and reviewing the record is that there's a, there's a slight tone of the applicant is taking advantage of a nineteen ninety-five variance and a nineteen ninety-five structure that was built. When, it kind of seems to me that that may be kind of the case, but it's as much or more the applicant may be burdened by the nineteen ninety-five structure. A house preceding the nineteen ninety-five variance already had a garage that extended six some feet close to the line. And I could see many people that purchased a house without the ninety-five structure built on it, but with that garage, looking at this and wanting to design something and, and make it flush with the existing nine, six point four feet where the garage was. This applicant is simply because they already have the ninety-five stuff is trying to work with that. They may, if they had come with only the two-car garage and then wanted to build a room in a, a, a second story and a mudroom on it, they likely would have designed something differently than they're doing now. They're just trying to make the best they can with what, with the deck of cards they were given. That, that's kind of my comment as I, as I'm listening to everything. I would invite the applicant to respond if she wishes, but that's kind of my perspective.
I would agree and I appreciate the comment.
Any other questions for the applicant associate? Yes.
The, the issue with the, the runoff from, from the garage, I mean, it shows that, the, the comment, it, it terminates what's short of reaching the street and then exits the ground. Is that, I assume it's a, it's some sort of buried, it's pop and then, is there, is that an issue, is that a problem, taking it to the curb? I guess maybe, does there need to be some green space that...
If you could clarify if that is indeed a pop-up drain or is it going straight? I heard two different things. I heard that it was going straight to the curb underground, so...
Yeah, the, the gutters would, would come down the downspout into a drain box and that would follow in a six-inch line that would run out to a pop-up at the curb line.
So all water runoff would, would essentially...
Would basically be directed to the street.
And the driveway, I assume, would be designed to eliminate any possibility, any eastward runoff.
All, all, all the runoff would go directly to the street. None of it would go to the Donatelli's.
So I would think that storm issue could be addressed and, design, I mean, it sounds like that's, that's an easy fix...
Yeah.
...to eliminate that concern.
Exactly.
I mean, I would, I would think that should be clear in the plan that, but...
It's also included in the engineer's memo.
Engineer mentions it also in their letter, engineering letter.
That would be fair. Thank you.
Anything else for the applicant?
I was just going to say that let's...
You can, you don't have to stand up there.
That we could just have some discussion here. You know, I, I think this is interesting. I, I do feel though that, you know, after having heard sort of the responses from the architect and how they looked at the issues, that this probably is the best solution. The reason I say that is that in looking at the slope, it would be significant to have to go off the back. Now, I, back to the issue of the practical difficulty... the back. Now, back to the issue of the practical difficulty, I think it's reasonable to say that, that there is in homes, a need for a mudroom. And I'm sure that they had looked at many, many ways of trying to get that within the house. It does logically seem the best way is to incorporate it within the existing garage. This is a minimal additional variance upon what was already there based, as my fellow commissioners already mentioned, on a sort of an existing, not necessarily something that was of their doing, but it is a condition, it is what it is. As far as my overall sense of that east facade, I initially was kind of concerned about that and took a drive up that road. I think the curve does help sort of mask the idea that many of these homes will sort of ebb and flow as far as their relationship to the curb itself. So it wasn't so much that it's a very linear street and that you will really notice this. I do feel that the questions I had about the materials will be enough articulation. It is a little difficult to require the applicant to make, to change something that's already an existing condition on their house. In other words, they're not renovating, really renovating the master bedroom, they're adding on, but that would be touching a wall that's actually not even in the area of work. So we can express a preference for that, but I think it would be a little difficult to really request that as a condition. I'm comfortable with the fact that, the fact that the roof will be sloping away from at that ground level sort of first story height. It's going to be going off in the opposite direction. And I do agree with the architect that the pitch of the roofs really should match the existing home as much as possible because that's sort of the first telling, telltale mark when an addition has been added, when the roof pitches don't work quite right. I was also relieved to hear that the stone will carry around for that whole side right up to the existing garage. So it's not just going to be a solid wall of additional siding. So because of that, I think that I'm comfortable with supporting this variance request.
Any other comments, discussion? Commissioner Nemiroff?
I did have one thing to add, and I walked over and looked at the area too. And I can see Ms. Donatelli's perspective, but based on everything I've heard, including what Commissioner Lee and others have said, is I would support this variance request also.
Comments, Commissioner Forrest? Discussion?
I think it's, you know, when I look at it, I think it's a reasonable solution. I think it's attractive. I have no trouble with that. As far as the practical difficulty goes, I'm more struck by the need for room in the garage than I am for the need for the mudroom because I don't think that a need for a mudroom is a unique, universal need and that every other house and property has the ability of a mudroom on it, on that street. So I don't think it meets practical difficulty in that manner. I think more so the fact that they need a safer, more accessible garage and that this will help alleviate some of the trouble that they have in there. So that's where I'm coming from as far as the practical difficulty. Otherwise, it would really be a stretch. I am bothered by the fact that, okay, when you talk about articulation, you're only talking about the part that's being added on. And I don't agree with not considering that when a variance comes forward. I think it's a reasonable and rationally related request to have it comply with the 1995 variance, which it fails to comply with as it's written. So that bothers me. I would like to see something done, but we, I don't know how or what we can right now provide that's concrete enough and reasonable without any consideration by the homeowners to require. So I'm, but I am really bothered by the articulation. The thing is, when you talk about lower level garage windows, there's like a five foot slope away in, from, you know, before you get to the property line. So any windows you put up in that eastern or that side wall on the lower level are going to be that much less accessible because of the slope. And, you know, I think it's possible to place windows on that lower level. I really, really do. And I think it could be done in an attractive manner. I think the way it is now, yeah, it's where they're dealing with what's existing, but this is a variance request and a variance request, we can address those things if they're, if they're related to what we're dealing with at hand. So personally, I would like to see some type of blazing on that lower level, something to break that up. That's the most bothersome thing, I think, appearance wise as it goes. And I agree, as far as the roof slopes away, the stone wrapping, I know there was some concern in Mr. Steen's letter about the, you know, the proximity being increased as, you know, when you add stone facing and all of that. But I believe we measure setbacks from the foundation wall anyway. So it's, to me, that's not, and the same with the eaves aren't included, so I'm not concerned about that. It's a fairly minimal addition, but I just have a different result when it comes to the need for the addition and the practical difficulty that's at hand. I don't, I don't think it's a need for a mudroom because to me, that's just totally self-imposed.
Commissioner Carr?
As to the practical difficulty issue, it sounds like the garage is not very user-friendly with the door. So I think they've got a practical difficulty there and they also have the difficulty associated with their lot and the slope toward the creek. So take those two factors together and they don't have much place to really build an addition to improve their garage space. I would agree with Commissioner Forrest that I think the sidewall articulation is important. And I was going to ask Planner Teague, on the sidewall articulation ordinance, I believe that there's, that we don't dictate exactly what the articulation is, but we do give the applicant or developer some options to choose from, some of which, of course, would add on to the dimension of the home, which would not be appropriate in this instance. But certainly window treatments, shutters could be added. Is there shutters in the front of the home? There's not any on the side of the, on the side of the home. And so I'm thinking that perhaps a condition associated with the variance, if it were approved, it would add a condition that sidewall articulation would be added and that the applicant would have to work with the city to select from those sidewall articulation devices that have been identified by ordinance. And Carrie, would that work, Planner Teague?
You could. As you recall, the ordinance has a listing of things that can be used to break up that sidewall. They may have it in what they're proposing here, meeting the code as it exists today. If there's something specific that you're looking for, you might want to list that.
I would suggest that if it would ease everybody's conscience a bit, that we actually just propose that to the applicant, architect, to actually put a window in on that east-facing additional portion. I think that actually could be quite attractive. And I guess I agree in some sense that I don't find that so much a security issue anymore because we're putting windows in garage doors. And again, I believe you pointed out that the drop-off would put that so much higher than the adjacent house. It's almost ideal in some ways to use that as the device. So if that were put in there conditionally, is that something you could support?
I like that idea. I mean, it's minimal impact to the homeowner as well and builder. It's interesting though, my concern is somewhat that this still doesn't comply with a 1995 variance requirement.
You know, in some respects, I think that it's almost beyond us to really interpret what that meant. For instance, they use the word casement. In encasement windows, I tend to think of crank-out windows. So it's not clear. I do see there are two windows and in fact, that third larger window in the back. And I, again, I don't know whether that was accepted by, if it is accepted by the city building department, then it is sort of water under the bridge.
It appears to me, and I would ask the applicant to address this perhaps, appears to me though, that at least with the existing structure, approximately two-thirds of it on the lower level is already sheltered from view by trees. And so even if there were windows there, I think they'd be of little value and it would be a nit to have a window there for any design purpose. If anything, perhaps the applicant would prefer, if there's a real issue to have a breakup in the solid wall, perhaps the applicant would like to add a tree or two to that area. And that might be easier for them.
Can I speak to that or do you need to wait?
Go ahead.
Okay. I would just like to say that I had mentioned before that it was always our intent to take that opportunity to add some softening elements to that wall because this was existing when we bought the house. And to be honest, we haven't cared for it either. We had been considering landscaping and adding plantings at that, something that would provide height to cover that wall. And if that is something that the commission would suggest and feel comfortable with, we would be happy to agree to that.
Thanks. Commissioner Carr?
Commissioner Lee, I just wanted to ask you a question. Your suggestion about window, was that on the addition with the wraparound stone wall?
Yes. You could get a fairly nice window there. It could even have shutters to match the front. Yeah. So I'm not saying on the second story and I'm not saying in the existing portion of the home.
Correct.
And again, I would just like to get the applicant's feedback to that proposal, if you have any comment on that.
Sorry, if we could just be clear, you're speaking about putting a window in the new addition area where we had talked about wrapping the stone facing. Okay. I think that we can definitely look into doing that. I'm... So it would be a short window? I'm not an expert on that, but we would, we would be willing to look into that, absolutely.
Any further discussion?
I'll just say, I mean, this is a lot going on here. I'll just say that. And I do like, you know, not to get into all the details, but I do like that you're advocate of the creek and those pieces in there, the tree canopy in particular, as you probably well aware, we, or maybe not, we passed a tree ordinance a few months ago to try and keep some of that canopy around. So I think that's a good thing to try and keep that, as well as not necessarily, I know maybe you're within your right, but you're not necessarily building more towards the creek and taking advantage of that watershed and not necessarily adding a bigger burden on that as it goes through these urban areas, which there is a lot of urbanization on that creek already. So I, you know, I think in general, this makes sense. I, you know, there's always two sides of every story, but, you know, based upon that, with the creek and everything, I think you kind of went where you, where you could go in a way. So I'll leave it at that. Any other comments, motions?
Subject to the variance subject, find it to the staff commissioner board and the condition that a suitable window is added to the garage addition?
Commissioner Carr, you want to provide the wording for that one?
Well, no, that was fine. The window be added to the east side of the garage for purposes of articulation. And I wonder whether another amendment might be made to that motion as well to add landscaping on the east side as well, to again soften the view.
Let's get a second on that first, and then we can talk about it. So go ahead with your thought there.
Then I would ask, offer friendly amendment to also add that additional landscaping be planted on the east side of the property to soften the view from the east side.
Agreed.
Would be acceptable to the motioner and the seconder?
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest?
I'd like to see the practical difficulties expanded to include the marginal functionality of the garage and the proximity to the neighboring lot line, preventing that garage from being expanded directly that way.
Acceptable.
Seconder?
Agreed.
Okay. Got a motion seconded. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Nemiroff?
I will vote for this variance even as proposed, but I will wish to express my concerns about getting to this level of design detail.
So noted. Having said that, any further comments? Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you. So next up is a sketch plan review. A sketch plan review for Titus Eberhart at 66th Street at York Avenue in Edina. So as Carrie's getting set up there, I just want to point out in the sketch plan review, this is a non-binding piece to the discussion. What folks may do is bring before the planning commission and/or city council, plans that they may have just for some comments to see how it fits in, see if, you know, what comments there are before they may go out and do additional research and other items. So it's a, it's a non-binding item. If this would go forward, it would come back and be subject to public hearings at that time. So I just wanted to point that out ahead of time. If you have any comments to that, Carrie?
Nope. That's excellent. So this property is located at the northwest corner of 66th and Xerxes, just north of 66th, west of Xerxes. Site exists as three properties. There are two existing office buildings on the site today. The site is located within the area in our comprehensive plan where we talk about, anytime a rezoning is proposed, we consider a small area plan that needs to be done. As you know, that's underway. The site is guided today for regional medical use. It's this area in blue up here. What the applicant is proposing as part of this would be to re-guide that site to the, what we call the CAC, the Community Activity Center. So that's what all of Southdale is guided in the comprehensive plan and also the west, or the, excuse me, the east side of York. This would be a two-phase development. The first phase would be on that west side of the, of the site, second on the east. The first phase would be, so this is a rendering of what the project will look like. So the first phase is this western portion, which would be six to seven stories in height, would be 230 units. The second phase would be this east side, that would be five to six stories in height and would be 145 units. And I'll let the applicant go into the detail of the amenities and how the site plan works so as we don't repeat each other. Couple of other renderings of what the, what the project would look like. This is the overhead of the site plan. Now, they did have a couple of obstacles that they had to work around. There is a shared access agreement with the property to the west where this access, this access point off 66 comes in and it provides access to both the east site and this site. There's also an easement from this western site that goes through up to York here, provides that outlet. So they had to work around that. So as you can see here, that would still exist, that access easement back and forth. So this request would require a comprehensive plan amendment, as I mentioned, to be re-guiding the site from regional medical to community activity center. Just to back up, with the regional medical, the requirements in that district, it allows up to 12 stories in height and it allows a density of up to 80 units an acre for senior housing. Within the CAC designation, again, a 12-story height maximum, it allows a density of... Within the CAC designation, again, a 12-story height maximum, it allows a density of 75 units an acre, but that's any type of housing. So senior, just in the regional medical and any type of multifamily in the CAC. So the change that would be contemplated here would be the intersection, so all four corners of 66th, as it runs east-west, and Xerxes as it turns into York. So we would suggest that all four of these corners would become CAC. So on the south side, it already is. So the proposal would be to re-guide this site. We would also suggest as part of any formal application, there are a couple of adjacent sites on Xerxes. This is that audiology clinic that was rehabbed oh, five, seven years ago. We would suggest that be included, also the insurance agency and this retail center. So we would recommend that this all become the CAC. With staff sees this as kind of the gateway into Southdale as you approach the area from the north and from the east. So with that, just a couple of other issues that we would talk about, affordable housing as part of our policy. We would look to get 10% to 20% affordable units within this development, again, as that policy develops through the city council. We would look for sustainable design, a traffic study would be required to determine impacts on the roadways. And also want to mention that the working principles of the Southdale Area Group were provided the applicant. They have responded to all of those questions and that was emailed to the commission in advance of the meeting and I did hand out a paper copy for you this evening. So with that, I'll stop here and answer any questions you might have. And the applicant is here to present a little more of the detail of the project.
Any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Olson?
Hi, thanks. So quick question. So they're proposing 375 enclosed stalls, but we would require, wait, we require 375, but they're proposing 200 additional, is that correct?
A little more, yeah. Yep, within our mixed-use zoning areas, we allow a one-to-one parking ratio. They believe that the type of units that they're targeting here, they'll probably need a little more parking than that.
Okay. But those are all underground, so it's not surface parking. And then you're showing that they're proposing 66, the density is 66 units per acre. Is that per phase or is that for both phases?
That's both phases combined. The overall density would be...
Do you know what it is for each phase?
They did provide that information.
They can answer that, that's okay if you don't have it right there.
So phase one would be 75 units an acre?
Okay.
And phase two would be 56.
Okay. And then just my last question, just to provide me some background with the regional medical. You know, it sounds like now that we want to look at all four of those corners to be, you know, CAC to all be consistent. Was that thought or discussed when it was, the comp plan was amended to change it to regional medical or was there any?
It was more the existing uses. It was more a row of office development, so we really didn't consider that as potential gateway. That said, the council, this is one of the area, one of two areas in the city that they actually increased the allowed height. They took that up to 12 stories. So it was an area that they did anticipate for more intense development.
Okay. So it was more just accommodate kind of the existing uses?
It was.
Not necessarily, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Forrest?
So would they need a PUD here?
They would.
They would. And the reason for the PUD requirement?
Well, yeah, we would write, we would write the zoning ordinance for both sites and provide the parking requirements, establish different setbacks, different from what a standard zoning might allow.
You'd have a ton of variances otherwise.
Yeah, it puts in a, to place a specific requirement that this is the building that's going to be built, rather than just rezoning to a standard zoning where they don't necessarily have to develop what's being proposed.
Would that be a possibility, on the other hand? If we, if there wasn't a PUD, there would be a possibility of actually just rezoning that area, right?
They are, they're requesting a PUD.
No, I'm glad, that's good. I just was wondering about that.
You'd have a lot of setbacks.
I guess I want to make sure.
Yeah, as noted in the table, there would be quite a number of setback variances that would be required under a standard zoning.
But that's office district.
Correct.
So...
It would be the same if we were to.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it were to be rezoned to a residential, those same setbacks would apply.
Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, what is the basis that we would make that determination to re-guide from regional medical to CAC? For instance, what is this sort of status right now of regional medical? Is it shrinking the need for that? What, I don't have a good sense of that. Is that something we want to encourage, to shrink the regional medical? Is that even viable as a district anymore? What's your sense on that?
Yeah.
I know it kind of came up with that other project, you know, the Beacon project. It just raised that same question in my mind. What is regional medical and is there some value in retaining that?
Well, it's a good question. This regional medical district came about as part of the 2008 comprehensive plan, so it was new at that time. I think we just saw this area as, because of the location of the hospital, that this was the regional medical corridor, so to speak. That said, within the CAC and any of this office district here or within the mix zoning, within the entire Southdale area, medical use isn't allowed use. So even in changing this to CAC, medical use is still permitted there. Really, the only additional use would be in addition to senior housing, it would be for any type of housing.
Okay, then the flip side of that question is, is there any advantage in us thinking, thought-wise, to consider looking at where the best places for multifamily units would be? It seems like right now we're kind of sprinkling them all around the place and I don't know if there's any value or advantage of saying, maybe they need to be, you know, here versus there, not just all throughout the Southdale District. Is there anything on that that you can, thoughts you have to share on that?
Something like that might come out as part of our Southdale Area Study that we're looking at. That said...
Yeah, I think that's one of the things, you know, the Southdale Area Study is, you know, it's a small area plan, so pieces that are going, you know, they're tasked to look with items such as that coming across.
It seems that would be really important for that sort of linkability, walkability, concentration of people and movement. To have them dispersed throughout doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but I don't know. It's a small district and...
Depends how large you think the district is.
Yep, yep. Okay.
And we would see this as a good site for housing, really all of these corners here, given the proximity to the metro transit facility. So it's a very walkable site. Residents could walk to employment in the medical district, employment to the south, and then again, they could make that connection to the transit center that's right across the street.
You know, to Commissioner Lee's point, I mean, at the same time, we're also looking to make sure this whole area is walkable, right? And this whole, no matter where you're coming from. So, you know, when we did our little walk, well, I don't think you were there, but, you know, just how to get around here and the transit across the street at Southdale Center. So it is starting to have that synergy already, I think.
Commissioner Nemirov?
Thank you. Carrie, I have a couple of divergent questions. First of all, in this plan, and actually in some we saw recently, it talks about a variance would be needed for the building setbacks. I don't know if we've discussed that much. Does staff have a position on these setbacks?
Yeah, in the comprehensive plan and in the zoning ordinance, we encourage buildings to be pulled up to the street. We actually, there's language actually in the code that encourages variances for the buildings to be pulled up to the street.
The code doesn't match the comp plan necessarily.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question is more specific to this project. This project is a two-part project, with phase one, phase two. And as I understand it, at the completion of phase one, one, the more dense building will be built and the tightest building will be still standing with, I believe it's medical tenants. Oftentimes, two-part deals, the second part often changes. In fact, in my experience, the second part usually is much different than what you expect at the time you enter into the two-part transaction. More often than not, it changes. One thing I'm wondering is, what would this district look like if everything stopped after phase one, with the tightest building still remaining? And how would that match kind of the plan for the area?
Well, that's part of the beauty of the PUD rezoning. So we would rezone specifically for this use. There would be a master development plan approved for that PUD. So if they don't build this phase two, they have to come back and go through the whole process again to amend that PUD.
Okay, but we'd be in a position where we'd have one building built and one building not built, and we'd be have the old building. I mean, how does that match kind of the plans for the area?
Yeah, well, you would have an office, an existing office building next to the residential. The uses would all be allowed within that zoning ordinance, within that zoning district. But they have provided a graphic that shows, I think I have it in here. Sorry, you're seeing it? I'm not.
The phase one plan?
Yeah.
Which is slightly thirty-six.
Don't have a thirty-six.
Oh, it is here. Yep, thank you.
There we are.
Yeah, so this would be, let's see if I can pull that up a little. Yeah, so this would be what the site would look like with just phase one developed. You would have the existing office building.
Thanks, Carrie. I always have, as you, if you can't tell, I always have concern about two-phase, two-part deals. So perhaps when the applicant maybe wants to address that when they come up.
Certainly. It's always a risk. It is one thing that we posed to the applicant when they first came in was, we'd like to see these two sites develop together. There's long-term leases and things like that within that east side building. But they've demonstrated a plan where they could tie together in the future.
Yeah, the buyer lease projects, I believe, came in as a potential multi-phase plan.
Yeah, that was supposed to be a 10-year plan.
Ten-year plan.
All three.
All three are building, not, you know, distant perspective. So they actually sped that one up, but strange things can happen, I don't disagree. Any further questions for Carrie? Thanks, Carrie. If the applicant wants to come forth and give us a brief presentation.
Actually, you know, if I can just use Carrie's stuff in.
Not the house, don't bring back the house.
Okay. Commissioners, thanks for having us here tonight and letting us talk about our proposal for this site. I'm Rich Kaufman, representing the developer, DLC Residential. Just as a very brief introduction, DLC has been in business since 2004. We have properties across the country, all multifamily, similar to what we would propose here. About 4,000 units that are under construction or completed. And, you know, markets are, Texas, of course, here locally in the Twin Cities and we're committed to this market, so the Sedina site's exciting, of course.
Could you hold the mic a little bit closer, please?
Sure, absolutely.
I think some tough time hearing you. Thank you.
Sure. So the presentation we've put together this evening has been with the assistance of Dennis Settle from ESG and he'll kind of walk you through the details of what we've proposed. But we were proposing kind of high-end, high amenitized multifamily, which is what we specialize in, and we think or hope this is exactly what the city would love to see at this corner here. So with that being said, I'll let Dennis kind of walk us through it and then we'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rich. Are these mics not on? Can we turn them on?
Best use the hands up there.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the commission, my name is Dennis Settle, representing ESG Architects. I don't know if, how many of you have been around long enough to know this, but ESG is the successor firm to BRW, who has done a lot of work over the years in this neighborhood. We actually used to office in 7101 York Avenue, so we're very familiar with the Southdale-France Avenue District. Over the years, in the 80s and 90s, we were involved in some of the pioneering projects out here with Edinburgh and Centennial Lakes. Actually, going back even a little earlier than that, we were in part responsible for the Galleria growing to the west and consuming what was the Southdale Ford site in 1978 or so. It was one of the very first projects I worked on as a student out of school when joining the BRW firm. And I say that not to praise anything, but it's just, it's a long history that we have in this neighborhood and it's something that we think is relevant to this particular project because we have been helping this neighborhood and helping the community of Edina grow towards a more walkable and sustainable mixed and multiple use developments in this area for now several decades. And we look forward to the opportunity to continue that with yet another project here in the near future. That said, as staff has pointed out, we have had several meetings, the team representing DLC has had several meetings with staff over time. And we have embraced the guiding principles, which you all have put out for the Southdale-France Avenue District. And I think that you, Mr. Teague has mentioned that he did distribute those written responses to those, to you. And we look forward to, as I said, helping to implement that higher degree of sustainability and walkability on this site as part of that overall district plan. As we look forward to or walk through the proposal, and I'm going to ask you your pleasure about since it's growing late, how long you want us to talk, how much detail you would like us get into. But after the overview, we'll take your questions, I'm sure. As we review those...
So there's, I mean, put in perspective, you know, there's smart people up here. We've read in advance of what you have, so, you know, tell us, tell us what, tell us really what this is about. You know, I don't think you need to necessarily go into all the core detail, this is a sketch plan, we're looking at the big picture here. You know, how do we stay within that and talk through that? That'd be my suggestion.
Mr. Chair, you're absolutely right. It is a sketch plan and so therefore there are many details that are not entirely worked out yet and we will be coming back, provided you salute this plan tonight, albeit informally.
You know, we don't need to show the concrete patterns or things like that.
Right, of course, of course, understood.
Thanks.
I was hoping you were going to say that, to be honest with you. I think it's important, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, to understand that we are attempting to address as many of those goals of the working principles as we can in this proposal, recognizing that it is a single site and recognizing that, you know, we can't impact the entire district. We certainly want it to find its place and fall within that district in a meaningful way and help to hopefully show an example to how other sites should and can be developed in the future. In that respect, we are, as Mr. Kaufman pointed out, providing a need for housing, which is currently not here or maybe underserved in this neighborhood with the large medical community nearby and with the higher disposable income and the lifestyle style of housing, you know, more and more people moving into higher, highly amenitized rental housing is exactly the kind of demographic that this project is here to serve. We think that similarly, based on the guidelines, this is a gateway site to the Southdale District. And as such, we think that it is deserving of gateway and iconic architecture. We know we... We know we use that term a lot, but I think as we view the proposal, that that is one of our goals, was to try to do something that was quite dramatic on this site and will be a nice gateway into that district. And finally, all of those elements of sustainability that we talk about so much, the walkability, the greening of the community, the treatment of the stormwater. Our firm has had a long history of doing just these things, as evidenced by the fact that Excelsior and Grand in St. Louis Park was the first-built project in the community to receive a lead designation for neighborhood design, which is, you know, I think, well, a nice goal, something that we can bring to bear on this project as well. Mr. Teague already referred to the fact that it's a two-phase development. Oops.
You went the wrong way.
I'm going the wrong way. I'm very sorry. There we are. The building on the right, the kind of S-shaped building, is the Phase One development, and part of the reason why the site is configured the way it is, is so that we can preserve the existing tightest building in the short term. The roadway that runs north and south through the middle of the site is placed in a position exactly where it needs to be in order to preserve the underground access to the tightest building. We would love to be able to boot that road a little further to the east, but frankly, we just simply cannot do so. But therefore, we are putting the Phase One building on that, excuse me, I said east, didn't I? I meant the westerly side of the site. I'm very sorry. It's on the westerly side of that road, which is placed where it is because of that driveway. The easterly building then is the Phase Two building, which would be constructed presumably after some of the existing leases run out in that existing office building. The orange area, you heard Mr. Teague refer to the encouraging buildings to address the street front. Under the existing setbacks, our buildings would be set quite a ways back from York Avenue. We, in this case, have moved some of the resident amenities to that south end of the site so that they truly do address the street, and they address the street in building masses that are varied in height, so that that, part of the drama that I referred to is having the interplay of different building heights along York Avenue. So it becomes very much of a gateway feature. As one is driving by, one sees a variety of stuff instead of simply large, unarticulated Here you see on the upper view what that frontage along York Avenue would look like with the Phase One on the left-hand side of the screen, Phase Two on the right-hand side of the screen. The area in white at the lower levels are those residential amenities, which would put people and vision glass out on the street. And we are connecting the area in between those two facades with a fairly elaborate pedestrian streetscape that would include some vertical elements so that, albeit, you know, the buildings themselves cannot address the street along that entire frontage, there will be architectural elements that will. Again, here you see the Phase One with the existing building in place. Here is the lower level of the, the lowest level, I should say, which is street level at York Avenue. And the, once again, the orange areas are those residential amenities that are fronting, essentially creating a liner around the garage so that as the site rises, the garage is hidden behind that, and the street frontage is, in fact, filled with people spaces, occupied spaces by people, and they'll be, you know, seen from passersby and walkers as opposed to having the garage fronting there. This is a fairly dramatic view. As one drives north on York Avenue, the Phase One building is almost centered on that right-of-way, which we thought was a pretty dramatic image. I think, since, as you pointed out, you are smart people and have the chance to review that, maybe I should just stop there and open it up for your questions. Is there anything in particular that you want to hear that you haven't already read or known?
Commissioner Olson?
Can you address some of the staff's comments, you know, affordable housing and such, and how you would address that?
I think that one's for you, Rich.
It's certainly a consideration. I think we've done a lot of listening for the last few weeks with staff and even the neighbor to the west, and plan on doing a lot more listening as we plan the product, our project here. But I think there's a strong desire for some great architecture here. That's certainly what we want as a multifamily builder with the type of product we deliver. That's a little counterintuitive to affordable housing. It doesn't mean we, we wouldn't consider it. We just did a project that we worked very closely with St. Louis Park. They had the same comments, same concerns, same desire to have affordable housing, and we found a way to implement exactly that into the, into that project. We didn't get quite to the goals that Carrie mentioned there, but it's, you know, certainly something we would be open to discussing, and there's going to be some trade-offs, you know, between what we can afford versus the architecture that we're trying to introduce here. But certainly something we would, we'd be open to discussing, so.
Commissioner Carr?
Well, I just wanted to compliment you on the design. It looks fabulous, and the first thing I noticed was the differing heights of the buildings. That's the first thing that came to my attention, which I find very inviting, pleasing to look at, not having just one huge mass. So that's very attractive. I'm also very impressed with your landscaping, and that open area that you have, again, very inviting. And I think that's really key to not only the design, but the landscaping associated with the buildings make it basically a centerpiece and very friendly to pedestrians as well. So just wanted to compliment you on it. Looks great.
What struck me in, with the design, and I was very impressed, was the, as the face, the street face, as it curves and follows the sweep of, as you enter in this gateway intention, I really think that's, and it looks like both Phase One and Two have matched that broad, and I think it's going to make a very inviting approach, especially coming, going south, as was, as other projects that we have now seen in this whole intersection. I think that was a feature that I came across very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Forrest?
Along with affordable housing, one issue that repeatedly comes up with PUD applications is sustainability measures. And to be aware that we're looking for something other than just what is currently industry standard, that we would really like to see something that's forward-looking and innovative and measurable over time. So just keep that in mind.
I have kind of a list here. So kind of with staff's concern, just on the Phase One and the Phase Two, and how exactly that would work, and, you know, how long, how long are the leases? I mean, I, what I wouldn't want to see is kind of the city left holding the bag here and approve that, and then one phase gets done, and then the old office building sits there for whatever. I don't, I think, and I don't know what the reassurances are you can give to the city, but, you know, I think that's, that's a pretty big thing, that that wouldn't be left hanging out there with that. I'd also say, if you go back to the site plan for a second. Or the one, well, if you could go to the one where it shows the properties on the east side, too.
The properties on the east side.
On York? Or Xerxes?
The area.
Well, you can, yeah, I guess you can kind of see it there, but if you see those properties going over to Xerxes, and I don't know.
The two homes.
Yeah, the two homes there, and I have a concern that those just become orphaned properties there. I think Carrie kind of, kind of alluded to that, but, so one of my suggestions is how, you know, at least the front-facing one, I think when you're looking at a gateway piece, you're kind of leaving a lot on the table there as far as wrapping that whole, that whole piece of the site with not including that. But, you know, economics are what they are, so the comment there. I agree with Carrie's comments about putting the community centers on kind of all four corners here. I think we're kind of trending that way based upon that. Not to say that the regional medical district is by any means going away, but where's the balance with that? And here's a proposal we have in front of us as well. Echo the affordable housing piece. I think that's, you know, in my mind, about 100% have-to-have on this. You'll hear the same thing from the city council, and right now, the council is looking at some language to actually enforce that directly. As far as the exterior, I guess I wasn't as blown away as everyone was, else was here on the exterior. And part of it may have to do with the plan that came to us last time, the best-by kitty corner from here, and kind of the bigger mass with the larger exterior really, really following that, the whole intersection there. I know you're kind of doing it on the lower level, but I guess I was thinking something more gateway, little larger, but, you know, I don't know how that affects your plan. That's just my opinion. I'm not an architect, but just throwing out those two cents. And then, I know you mentioned it, too, you're, you know, we, all these are unfortunately islands in the bigger sea here. And how, how are you taking advantage of, how are you making sure that all those pedestrian touchpoints, transit touchpoints are all taken care of? And, you know, at the same time, not only just thinking within your piece, but if there's ways, you know, how do you, how do you get across 66 there? How do you, how do you make sure people can get to the mall, get to the transit area? How are those integrated into your plans? Where do you, were you coming forth with us to tell us how you're, how you're doing that, you know, whether it's signal improvements or whatever is going on there that anyone that's living here can easily get to all the other areas around here, you know, without having to play Frogger or something, getting across these streets? It's, it's, you know, it's not the best situation today, but again, we're trying to get to the next level, so don't take it in perspective of what's there today is okay, but what do we need to do to go forth and make sure these are accessible to everyone, transit-oriented developments for that? I think that's all I had for right now. Commissioner Nemiroff?
Just one thing to follow up what the chair had to say, and this is as much a comment to Carrie as it is to the developer, but it is a comment to the developer, is that perhaps, you know, we're seeing some of these development plans for these corners where their, their kitty corner from major roads and kitty corner from major destinations, and we're worried about pedestrian. Perhaps the city needs to, should be, we should be considering city working with the developers to come up with something, for example, and I don't, I'm not recommending this necessarily, but as something to spark the thinking, something like the bridges that are crossing Hiawatha around the 28th Street. Maybe something like that would be a solution to make it more pedestrian-friendly.
So right, not just with this development, but what else is, everything unify the area?
Commissioner Nemiroff, may I address that for just a sec, please? I think that you're right on with your remarks, and this project, if it does move forward, has to, you know, reach out and try to be a good neighbor and an advocate for, you know, helping to grow that walkability, grow that connectedness to other sites. And as I mentioned in the opening remarks, there's only so much that we can do with one site, but, you know, if our work in other communities and maybe even other projects in the Southdale area in Edina as an example, that's some of the things that we will be addressing with staff as we move forward, and what can we do, for example, with the roadway infrastructure to help improve it? There's a lot that we don't know yet, just as a for instance, and I hope I'm not out of line by mentioning this, but there was some conversation about, at this corner, maybe eliminating some of those freeride turns, which would bring some real estate back to the sites and narrow the intersections so we could create closer pedestrian connections across those roadways. You already heard Mr. Teague mention the rapid, the bus station across the street and the Penny's part of the Southdale lot. We know of, you know, certainly the connectedness, the need for connectedness to the hospital community campus to the northwest. Those are all things that we can work with, with staff in the following stages to try to help this be as good a neighbor to the rest of the district as it can be.
And I think that's one thing to come out of the Southdale area plan, small area plan, too, is just some, you know, how these public-private partnerships, right? You know, if, how those pieces go together, and to your point on, you know, if people that live here, if you want them to walk over to Fairbrough-Southdale, what does that mean? You know, is it, is it okay? Is it, you know, how do all those pieces fit together also? So you're not, not just doing an island and how it integrates and everything?
We're working on a similar kind of project in another community right now, in which, for example, the park dedication fee is going to be dedicated to making exactly those kinds of off-site pedestrian improvements around the project, and feeling that's consistent with the mission of park dedication in a larger district like this.
Commissioner Forrest?
As I look at the overhead plan, it looks pretty welcoming from all sides, but for me, that's something that I would like to see. It's a residential community here, and I, and it also backs up to other homes, offices, and areas that are pretty people-intensive. So for me, I'd like to see it be welcoming and attractive from all sides and not be able, you know, here's the front of the building and here's the rest of it.
Understood. In the package, there are views of the other sides. For example, you know, the view on the top of the screen right now is from the northwest, and you can see there that one of our larger open spaces is on that side of the building for exactly that purpose.
Yeah, that's what I, I did like, I did see that, and I liked it, and I also want to encourage it.
And Commissioner Carr, you mentioned the massing of the building, the stepping and whatnot. That, too, was a fairly deliberate response to the proximity to the property lines and the setbacks and to some of the neighbors wherein we're not putting, you know, major six-foot-high, six-story-high walls, you know, right up against our adjacent properties, but in fact, we're stepping the building back. The tallest portion of the building has stepped back with smaller masses that join the neighboring properties, as you see here, for example, in the foreground, on the right side of the upper image, where we are adjacent to the neighbor to our west on York. We stepped down to four stories of that portion, for example, which is very close to the scale of that existing building.
Commissioner Forrest?
What is your anticipated or speculated dream world timeline for the phases and/or the time between the phases?
Phase One, that west lot, we would love to start almost immediately after, you know, approval, so that would be potentially a 2016 start. Phase Two, which has been mentioned a couple of times, we would love to start that right after, but there's some longer-term leases in that tightest building that I think are as long as seven years, five to seven years. So, you know, again, we've put a lot of thought into Phase Two, it is most definitely our intent to do that, but we've got some long-term leases that we have to, you know, honor and deal with. So that would be the timing for that second phase could be a few years longer than we prefer, so.
Susan? I didn't see the hand up.
Ah, sorry. Okay, well, I think, I guess my first impression is the scale of this is overwhelming. Having said that, I'm a big fan of ESG and what was done at Excelsior and Grand. So can you tell me what makes this Edina? Why did you go this route? What drove you in this direction as opposed to that project?
That's a really good question. There, you know, no two sites are alike, obviously. Several of the things that differentiate this from that are, Excelsior and Grand was truly a, an opportunity for a viable, strong mix of retail on the ground floor and residences above that was sandwiched, or, excuse me, extended along almost a quarter-mile of frontage on a major arterial street. This has a relatively small frontage on one street and is, you know, interior lot lines on three sides.
on one street and is, you know, interior lot lines on three sides. So it just simply doesn't have the kind of exposure or the opportunity for storefronts that an Excelsior and Grand did. We also don't have the opportunity without replicating the, you know, kind of auto-centric asphalt parking lot of the existing office building. We don't have the opportunity to park a lot of retail. Retail comes with that disadvantage, although everybody loves to walk the pedestrian streets and, and that nice, you know, retail neighborhood with benches and pots along the wide sidewalks and whatnot. That happens along quieter streets than, for example, here at 66th and York. And there's not enough frontage to create a retail district, and we're too far removed from the other retail areas to make this part of a retail district. So it's, it's a residential site. And, and in that respect, it is a single-use site unlike Excelsior and Grand, which was truly a mixed-use vertically-integrated mixed-use site. There are a number of things I could go on about, but it, it is a remarkably different position than, than that project was.
And what makes this Edina, I guess?
Oh, boy. Edina is a pretty special place. As I mentioned, we have a pretty long history out here and feel that, that this, this Southdale area is unique in that it is, you know, a burgeoning conversion from what was almost exclusively a retail environment at one point in time to becoming truly a, a mixed or multi-use environment. And that could be said of other places than Edina, but it is particularly unique here. You know, Southdale is a one-of-a-kind thing. It's historic. And, and to be able to see that evolve and the community around it evolve in this era of sustainability and, you know, try to move away from the auto-centric to truly walkable, community, walkable neighborhood is, is pretty special in our mind. As I said, that can happen in a lot of places, but, but Edina and, and Southdale area in particular is really unique in that, in that regard. As was Southdale in its day in the, in the early 50s. You know, maybe this kind of thing and, and what this city is doing, your city is doing with the small area plan and, and you know, trying to look to expand and, and mature the Southdale area can be as much of an example of the future as, as Southdale was in its day.
Well, this project still feels very auto-centric to me for some reason. I, I think maybe it's because it, it still, it feels in some respects that it, it doesn't truly engage the street. It engages its own property. And I was happy to hear that you have considered and are looking forward to working with the staff as far as maybe making some recommendations on, on our roadways and such. I guess I would, I would, I would encourage you to continue that vision. That intersection is pretty major. It's pretty daunting if you've stopped at the stoplight to just sit there and, and wonder when your chance to go is. And I can't imagine crossing that street. And sometimes I've thought, boy, if you were ever going to put a rotary, it seems to me that would be the one place and you'd put a nice big monument in the center of it, you know, because it's so big. But I think that what I'm hearing from you is that Southdale's vision really is about staying contemporary. And this is, has a very modern approach to it. And I have, in my mind, gone back and forth between what is pedestrian oriented? Do we want smaller-scale things with a little more shop fronts? But maybe, maybe it's very difficult to really do that in Southdale, and maybe it doesn't really need to. But on, on the other hand, how do we work in, in the pedestrians? How do we engage the people to encourage them to walk? And I think we, we could use some, some vision on that part. So don't shy away from that. And I would say, again, really think about what is it that could make this really Edina? I mean, that is a pretty major intersection. I don't think you even get that opportunity down by France and 494. This is, this is, this could be, like you said, a gateway. The other thing about a gateway is you really have to think about where the people are coming from. And I think, I have a little difficulty thinking, where's the true gate? You know, are they, are they coming down York, heading north? Are they really coming on 66th, going east? I'm uncertain. And so then that will impact what you want the face of, of that building to really be. It, it seems natural that it should open up to the intersection, but when you do that, that means somewhere is the true gateway and somebody is seeing the side of your, your building until they actually get to that intersection. So I think there's some potential here. And again, for something this scale to, to fly, we would be looking for the affordability of it. The, I hope that everybody's done their homework. It seems like there's a lot of proposals coming before us for, as we call, market rate, high-end rental units. And I would just hate to see the city stuck with any number of projects and none of them filled. So we make the assumption that that is something you have already taken into consideration and that the timing of this is such that there will be the demand for it. If there is, in fact, all these projects that come down the line, get built and actually occupied, we have a significant increase in our population. So that will translate into traffic. And again, how do we get the people around? So. But I think it's a good, good first vision. And I do like what Commissioner Carr noted, is that the breaking it up into these, these different heights and different, sort of that undulation in and out really makes a difference. Otherwise, it could, could feel very monolithic, similar to, I think, the other project we looked at was, had this monolithic feel along the, the city, the city side of it, the street side of it, I should say, the street side. So, so that was pretty much my comments.
Thank you. I think some of your observations were spot on.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi. I agree. I like the looks of this, but I also agree with Commissioner Lee. I think it seems a little massive. And I would also like to see, I know that we have Best Buy coming in, Kitty Corner. And one of the things that we want to look at with the Southdale area plan is how they all connect together. So when you come back, I would like you to kind of take a higher viewpoint. So you can show, you know, how is the connectivity from the properties to the north? Like those, can they cut through this property? And then show how those flow and how that's going to, where the, you know, how you're going to connect to these crosswalks and how it would connect to the Best Buy. You know, maybe look at what they're proposing. And then also show how the connectivity to Southdale. Because I know we always talk about the transit center there. It's not easy to get to. You know, you're kind of walking through parking lots and, you know. So if you could just take that bigger picture, that's one of the things we really want to see. I know, you know, this is your one piece of property and, but it's not an island. We want to be able to kind of see how it's going to be playing and working well with all the other properties kind of surrounding it. You know, northeast, south, all of them. So I'd really like to see that. I know you have that spine going through there. I just, again, I don't understand. Is that, you know, to public, you know, is it open to everyone to use and go through? You've got the parking lot on that southeast corner. That's, that's your one surface parking? Is that where it is?
It is, correct. There is some, some parallel parking along that north-south spine. And your observation about the connection to the existing residential properties in the north is a good one. That north-south spine, you know, not unlike some of the side streets in Excelsior and Grand, is designed as, you know, a residential street, even though there are larger buildings abutting it. You know, the, the notion of having front stoops along that street, having parallel parking along that street, having nice pedestrian treatments along that street, you know, not only adds to the interior, the charm of the interior of the site, but it provides a pleasant walk for those folks in the existing properties to the north to get to. And, and you'd see that it aligns on the south with what could be an enhanced crosswalk with, you know, areas of refuge in the middle of 66th Street, for example, to improve the connectivity of this, those to the north to Southdale in the south.
Great. And so, well, that was my main comment, but also just the mixing of the uses too. Maybe just, can you explain how you've looked at that? Or, you know, why it's just, I know you kind of just delved into that a little bit, but is there any ability to bring any other uses into the site?
There was actually a point about six weeks ago when Rich's partner said, yeah, you're right, put some retail in there. And after looking at it a, a bit further and, and how that would complicate the parking and add, you know, additional, all of our parking today and, and some of the questions prior to, you know, after Kerry's presentation before we began ours responded to parking, we are parking this at a rate of one car per bedroom, safe and secure underground, plus a few additional cars for those, about 10% for those who may want to have more than one per bedroom. And we have really a very small amount of surface parking that's intended only for guests of residence and visitors to the, the sales or leasing office. And, and you know, one of the probably internal criticisms we have is maybe there's not quite enough surface parking there, but we don't want to do any more because, you know, we don't want to create yet another auto-centric kind of development that we've seen too often in the past. So where we do have in that, that triangular yellow courtyard, if you will, call it an autocourt, or the current trendy term is a unorf, unorf, I believe it's a Danish term for an area that mixes pedestrians and automobiles. You know, we want to make that as, as pleasant as possible, but recognize that we do have to have a few cars here. One of the notions was that, that landscape island in the middle could be the home for maybe a, a public art installation. We're going to have underground stormwater retention, a system, system here. And maybe that landscape area is where that, that stormwater retention, you know, shows its head, if you will, as a special landscaped rain garden with a water feature that, you know, expresses that, that collection and retention and treatment of stormwater. There's a lot to think about here. It's a complicated site, and it is a large development. It's compact, so that makes those outdoor spaces special. We like outdoor spaces in, in compact environments like this because we use the buildings to shape and sculpt and mold those outdoor rooms as if they were rooms. And each of the five distinct open spaces on this site, you know, can have a unique and character for it, albeit many of those will be reserved for the residents. That on the, on the southeast is, is the most public of those, and, and it's, it's demanding of something pretty special.
Okay. Thank you.
As I say, you definitely seem to be very thoughtful on the open spaces. And I don't want to say pocket parks, but you know, the kind of that concept is many, many locations within this of, of those pieces versus just kind of doing a sidewalk, right? So Commissioner Forrest, did you have something?
Yeah. When she brought up the, the different uses and things and bringing in retail, it made me start thinking, I think the, probably the most striking thing that you said there was the, the connectivity for people to walk through there. It's very daunting, imposing, intimidating to see a complex of buildings that are related to one another. The rule-bound side of me is like, ooh, I can't go in there. That's private property. I can't go through there. So I like the idea of inviting people to go through, of making it easy for people who live north of there to walk down to the crosswalks or cross, the crossings at 66th. And then when she was talking about retail, I was thinking, what about amenities that are quasi-for the public, but mostly to service your residents, like small outfits, whether it's a dry cleaner pickup or a shoe repair or bicycle service? Just, I'm talking about very small in area places, flower cart type thing, things that other people could use, but it's there, it's not the kind of thing they're going to drive to, to get to. Now economically, I know that's another question, but it seems like those kinds of things that would just help serve the, the residents. Maybe it's someplace that just sells, sells bags of coffee or something. You know, things that are friendly and welcoming and lively, but not necessarily the, the commitment of retail, especially for parking.
Certainly get your point on the retail, but it just, it seems like, certainly get your point on the retail, but it seems like something small would want to be there, right? You know, at least for the, to your point on the, the residents that are there versus, and, and maybe that's part of it is hopefully don't have to drive everywhere for everything. Maybe that's the better way to say it. Commissioner Nemiroff?
Have you given thought, maybe, who are your, who are the, what's the profile of people that will be tenants at this property?
You know, the 30-some professionals, I think Dennis mentioned, you know, with the proximity of the hospital, you know, there's a lot of employees there, I think, you know, good disposable income, you know, successful professionals. I don't think we're looking for necessarily empty nesters here, but you know, certainly that's the demographic of our, you know, the property. We are close to opening in St. Louis Park already. So that's the type of traffic we're seeing. I think that's what we would draw here as well. So.
I might just add that, that in many of the apartment redevelopments that we're doing recently, an empty nester is a fairly strong component of the mix. We call them renters by choice. And, and this is a post-recession phenomenon wherein, you know, folks don't have the faith in the constant escalation of the value of their, their investment in a home anymore. There are those who don't want to be tied to a 30-year mortgage if they feel they need to be moved for a job, or if they have a home in another community. They want the flexibility of having a, a rent that they can, or lease they can break in six months or a year, or if they pay a fee in less than that, and not be tied to a mortgage. So it's a relatively new phenomenon, but it's a strong phenomenon. And renter by choice applies to empty nesters as much as it does to young professionals who are more likely to be moved for a job somewhere.
And so are you, are you fairly confident that you can fill these spaces with these kinds of tenants?
That's a long conversation, but yeah, of course, we believe that, that's what we're proposing. You know, we've had good luck on our first project so far. The pre-leasing on, on even our, our product here in St. Louis Park has been phenomenal and pretty well received. So yes, we strongly believe it.
Commissioner Carr?
This is something that I would encourage you to do. And of course, my comment is also really for the city of Edina. I don't have control over the city of Edina, but this is like an ideal opportunity to work on the streetscape at this intersection. It's a hideous intersection, tons of traffic going this way and that. And if you could partner with the city to help this livability, walkability concept through the use of calming streets, slower streets, possibly parking along the side of the streets like they do on Excelsior Boulevard, and landscaping, all those elements, but these are oftentimes within the, the city's purview, not yours. But yet, I think that if the developers work with the city, and we have other developers across the street, that we really have to have a vision for what that intersection looks like that will complement what you're doing. And other developers work as well. So I would encourage you to work with the city to, and push them as to what their plans are for this streetscape.
And I might add, the other player in that will be the county. These are county roads as well. And, and working with Hennepin County when it comes to traffic and roadway issues can sometimes be very challenging. But a point well taken, you know, that, that would be our goal.
Commissioner Forrest?
What's your mix of unit sizes, number of bedrooms, things like that?
On a preliminary basis, and if we compare to previous projects, recent projects that D L C is doing in, in St. Louis Park, we will be probably 55% studios and one bedrooms and 45% two bedrooms and larger. There are a few three bedrooms. Many of the, the ones would have dens or a bonus room. But generally, it's in the range of 55%, maybe 60% studios and ones and, and 45 to 40% larger.
I like the idea of a mixture, just because a more diverse community, whether it's family size, age, whatever, it's a much more interesting and, I think, healthy place. But when you talk about, I'm thinking of the difference between this and St. Louis Park and the proximity to retail and the medical district. Most of the people who are working at even the hospitals aren't the people with the big disposable incomes. It's the residents who are there for two years or something that, that might be looking for a nice place in close proximity that they could be proud to live at. But it's not necessarily going to be the top of the line income and expenditure type people. So that's why I'm thinking this whole affordability thing is, is important. And I'm talking affordability in order to support people in the workforce who have healthy incomes, but, and contribute so much to the area. But especially, I think about the short-term people who are there for two to three years is ideal. So. for two to three years is ideal, so it's just, it's a little different here.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that whole affordability issue is something that's going to be the subject of some discussion with staff as we move forward. A lot of discussion.
Anything else, folks, or it seems like we're kind of wrapping up here, so have any comments back on those? It seemed like a pretty decent discussion on our thoughts.
Well, we've been taking some notes, you know, many of the comments seem to talk about connectivity and doing everything we can to, you know, enhance the neighborhood, not just be an island, but, you know, truly do our part to improve in the neighborhood. And as we've said, you know, several times now, we'll work with staff to try to do exactly that. We thank you for your time and input tonight.
I'm assuming you're going on to city council then, also?
Yes.
Gotcha.
If we have some sort of endorsement, yes, certainly.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next up is the 2016 work plan, and you all should have a copy of that. That, for those of you new on the commission, we go through this yearly. We end up going to, along with all the other boards and commissions, we end up going to talk to the city council about this. I think it's in early September, right, Carrie, or mid-September?
Yes, we need to have this completed by the end of September, so we still have a couple more meetings.
Couple more meetings, so I just, I don't know if anyone has any comments on here. I don't know if we need to go through every little piece, but I think some of the, kind of, the themes this year that we'll be working on, in particular, is the Southdale Small Area Plan will be a big one, and then also how that and/or other things transition to the start of the comprehensive plan. And I guess, Carrie, I'd like to sometime talk to you a little bit more about that also, and how we want to address that, and if other people have, you know, what was done previously, and, you know, how we kind of get those pieces moving along again also.
That would be great. I see that as the biggest item for us, so we want to at least get the planning started right as 2016 starts. I think our goal should be mirroring what was done back in, when the comprehensive plan was finished, actually didn't get finished until 2009, but we started it the fall of 2006. So I'd like to start fall, you know, toward the end of 2016, to fully, fully get started on it. So we need to do the planning early in 2016.
Yeah, and I just want to put that perspective of other things that are on here, too. I know other things are important also, but, I mean, that could be a fair amount of our time with those, so as people look at this and gather their thoughts on, you know, what's the key things we can address and the bandwidth of the group here. Commissioner Carr?
Planner Teague, since I wasn't involved in the prior comprehensive plan review, maybe what you could do for...
None of us were.
Yeah, none of us were. Maybe what you could...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Forrest was.
Well, most of us weren't, but perhaps what you could do for us is do maybe a high-level outline of the various steps that are involved in amending the plan, and the time you feel is needed for each of the steps, just at a very high level, so we know the direction we need to take.
I like that idea. That's a good first step for us to get planning.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Olson?
So the PUD requirements, have you been working on that then, or what, has it been here in front of me this whole time? I'm just now noticing it, or?
It's been in front of you this whole time.
It's honored, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, well, how's that coming? Why, the reason I'm asking is because, you know, this is exactly like what we were just talking about tonight with the sketch plan, and that's exactly kind of what we're going over with the whole Southdale area plan, and...
Yep, and those things are going to...
Merge.
Blend and merge to...
I'm just, I'm just wondering, is it, is it in the running? I mean, are we kind of, is it happening kind of at the same time, or should we, I don't know?
I see it as, it should be a separate item that I would love to bring forward and get started with this group, but time just hasn't been on my side.
Yeah.
I think part of it morphs into those things also, and maybe taking pieces from that and applying it towards this, if that makes sense.
Taking whatever else we're doing and applying it to the PUD requirements, or vice versa?
But as we're, as we're, well, it's, I think it's just going to be a blend of things, because as you go through for small area plans, you're going to, things are going to come out of that that may apply, you know, for PUD-wise also.
It is, and some things are, you know, as part of the Valley View Wooddale, we did the storefront, what we're looking for there, so I see that as a piece of this. You know, we want to get, we're working on the affordable housing policy, so that'll be a piece of this. So in a way, we are working on it.
Yeah, that's what I was...
But we need to bring it all together.
It's not formalized, to your point, I think.
Well, it's not even that. I just, I guess I was just going to emphasize that that isn't one that we should let slip, that we should give you the support or the, you know, yeah, or support to say that that should be a priority, because that's very important. It does tie all of it together, and, I mean, yeah.
You know, thinking about that in the context of people who want to champion things like that, too. I mean, that's, seems to be kind of what these take to get done, for example, the Woodview, Valley View, I mean, that wouldn't have happened unless some people were very involved in it, which they were, and the same thing with Southdale, so, you know, put that in perspective with the bandwidth, and if particular passion, certainly, you know, jump in and potentially run with it.
Thank you.
Would it ever be helpful to, just that your description of a champion behind it, but would it ever be helpful to assign someone, a planning commission member, to each of these initiatives, to either follow it, or assist you, or if there was some who knows what? I'm just trying to find a way to support that, since that is actually our work plan, as well as staff.
We used to have more names on here.
Yeah.
We used to have names. I don't know if we want to go back to that, but we did have names, or people were supposed to do this or that, so.
I think that would be a great idea.
I would, I would be open to that, certainly, yeah. Help with background research.
I would love to put my name on the monitoring residential redevelopment standards, probably Arlene would, too. Maybe Joanne would like to follow on that PUD one, because you're already involved in Southdale, I don't know, or maybe that would be Mike. He'll take lighting. Okay, we got to, we got to, we got to take her for the lighting. Anyways, this might be something to consider for the next meeting, but...
Yeah, and like I said, yeah, to that very point, we kind of had that breakout before, previous and sometimes, and there were people that were listed on some of these, and...
Yeah, I've been a proponent of the lighting ordinance. Streets, living streets.
You know, I don't, I don't know, Carrie, if it's, I was thinking that, too, if, you know, what, what we did last year is important to have on here also, somehow? You know, it's kind of, here's what we accomplished last year, too, because we did have a fair amount of accomplishments, you know, with the Wooddale Valley View, the tree ordinance, some things like that, that, so I don't know how, that's why I was kind of thinking of listing things that were coming off or something, too, or things we, you know, here's, here's what, I don't know how that fits into the council, what they're wanting to see, but...
They take a look at our 2015 plan and what we've accomplished, so it's kind of done separately, so we're...
That's fine. Commissioner Forrest?
But I think it's a really good point in, in some way, pointing out how there's a progression in certain areas, and I think that's an excellent point.
Commissioner Nemiroff, what are you volunteering for?
I'm not sure. If you want me to, we can talk about it. But a couple of things, on the, I do note that there's a progress report box here, and since these are ongoing initiatives, should, should there be something, they all, they all say just click here to enter text, I mean, is it, is there value in saying something?
Yeah, I should mention, this is a new format that we've been given this year, so this does look a little different than what we've had in the past. So clearly, yeah, they're looking for that progress report.
And then I had a couple other different questions. Is there any initiative related to Grand View? I don't know if there should be one or shouldn't, I'm just wondering if that's...
There's been many.
That's been part of this work plan for almost as long as I've been here. The last, you know, we completed the, well, I guess it wasn't a small area plan, but the vision, the guide for the area, and that project has been handed off to Bill Newendorf as the staff person that's responsible for that now.
So it's not part of this necessarily?
Correct.
Okay.
It's kind of, yeah, to that point, it's passed through here?
It has.
I don't want to say that, that it couldn't come on, but it was on there for quite a few years, and there was just a ton of time put into it by people in the planning commission, so that was a lot of effort that went into it, so.
I used to know if it's, it's kind of in a ongoing status.
Yeah.
Maybe the planning commission and staff's efforts and that have completed, and it's just at a phase beyond that, is what you're saying?
Not really, but, in a way, it is, because it had passed through here.
You'll get a lot more, once the council makes a decision on which way to go, there's still all the zoning approvals and sketch plans and the full...
But it's not a separate initiative for this group?
Correct.
Okay. And then finally, I'm wondering if there should be an initiative at all related to the Southdale, the questions that came out of the Southdale Area Work Group, if there should be initiative to review those, and perhaps they somehow get, something gets identified to incorporate them into some ordinance or related to something. Right now, they're just questions that we hand developers, but I don't know if they're necessarily, I know at one time, we talked about reviewing those and seeing if we needed to tie them to any ordinance, or tie, make some reference.
The next phase of the Southdale Small Area Plan is ongoing.
Yeah.
And they're going to take those and do more with them.
Okay, so that would...
So that could lead into things, as you mentioned.
Okay.
An ordinance, or a small area plan, an overlay district, something like that. So they're not, that was, I don't want to say a stopgap measure, but that was what initially came out of it.
That was a stage.
But that's, that was a stage of it, so there's also those, the stages that are going to carry on with that as well.
But reviewing them, so then, so then reviewing them and perhaps incorporating all or portions into Edina ordinances isn't necessarily a separate initiative that needs to occur at this time?
I don't think so. I would say on that Southdale Area Plan, how can we connect that better to the planning commission, it seems? Carrie, it seems...
It is, it is in here.
I know, but I mean, just for more updates or something, it seems like it's, it's easy to lose track of it. So what information on the meetings, I, it's been a little quiet on that, at least from my perspective right now.
Yeah, they, we have met the last couple of Mondays. It's more about, you know, getting the council to agree to letting the group go forward with Phase Two, which they've done, and now they've been working on, the council asked the group to come forward with some names for the council to consider to add to the group, so that's kind of been the main focus. In the meanwhile, there is an RFI that's been posted on the APA website, and I've sent it to almost every planning firm in the Twin Cities that I could think of, for the RFI to engage a consultant for the next step. So that's the, that's where we're at at this point. We're hoping to go to the council next Tuesday with the three names to be considered for being added to the group. One of our planning commissioners is one of those candidates. It's Claudia.
And the reason is, is because I do live in the Southdale district.
Any other further questions on the work plan or comments? Like I said, take a look at it, and over the next couple of meetings, we'll have to update it. All right, the next up is correspondence petitions, and the attendance sheet should be in your packets. Any comments on that? Commissioner Nemiroff?
I actually did have some questions about the attendance sheet. And maybe they shouldn't be marked, but after looking, it just dawned on me, we've had a few meetings separate and apart from our public planning commission meetings, and I'm wondering if they should be reflected on here. I think we had a joint meeting with the city council regarding the Southdale Area Plan. We did a separate meeting where we reviewed the Southdale area. We did a, we also had a separate work session with this, with the attorney. I'm just wondering if those should be reflected on here or not.
Carrie, you can jump in, but typically, those aren't have-to-have, or have-to-be-at, and they don't count towards your having to attend so many for that. We haven't previously, I mean, this, this year, we had a few more for some orientation things and what have you, but typically, the only things that usually count towards our actual attendance are things where, like the council work group, I think, right?
Right, it's just your regular meetings and the one regularly scheduled work session with the city council.
Yeah. Otherwise, it would be very, well, difficult to enforce that with people's time schedules.
But nonetheless, this is designed, if you look at the instructions on the bottom, they talk about meetings held, whether it's a regular meeting, whether it's a work session, whether it's a special meeting, or something like that, and so there's the implication that they would be on here, and I don't know.
Well, I mean, what's the definition that counts towards the attendance in your bylaws?
I mean, whether or not, I mean, they've got all these different options, it's all the same.
It's written into the ordinance, I don't have it in front of me, but that's what counts toward your attendance, is regular meetings and the work, the work session with the council.
Yeah, one thing, as one is, I think that all makes sense. I think that regular meetings make sense for determining membership. There are these other meetings people attend, it's not bad to even track that if there's anyone out there looking to know what the members of the planning commission are doing related to the city, but whatever, you know, I'm, just my thoughts.
Commissioner Carr?
And I just want to note that Commissioner Nemiroff has 100% attendance.
All right, moving on from the attendance, so chair and commission comments, anything? No? Any staff comments? Had a fair amount of discussion here.
Couple of things of note, in September, there is a religious holiday on September 23rd, so the regular planning commission meeting will be September 30th, which is actually the fifth Wednesday of the month. That was when we had talked about, yes.
Which will, you will be marked on attendance for that one.
That said, that is the date that we had tentatively set with our joint meeting with Richfield and Bloomington, so I've been working with their staffs to try to come up with some more dates to propose, and the best that we've come up with at this point is November 18th, so we don't have to decide anything tonight, but I throw that out there as a potential for our joint meeting with Bloomington and Richfield and their planning commissions.
Thank you, Carrie. Commissioner Carr?
I did receive an inquiry from a resident about ordinances having to do with homes that are in the state of disrepair. We don't usually have anyone coming to the planning commission with that type of inquiry, but Carrie did do some research for me, and we heard back, and there's three ordinances that are looked to, and we don't have to deal with that tonight, but I thought it would just be informative for the planning commissioners to hear what ordinances regulate homes that have fallen to a state of disrepair, in case anyone else gets a question. So maybe next time, Carrie, you could put that on the agenda, unless you'd like to deal with it now.
I can, I can just give you, just kind of a quick overview. It's regulated through our health department and through the nuisance code, you know, another chapter of the, of the city code, but complaints come in in regard to the state of repair that a home may be in, and it has... of repair that a home may be in, and it has to be in a pretty poor state of repair to really require something be done. But there might be contacting that property owner, if there's some programs available, something that might be able to be done, we would work with them. But the staff does go out then and inspect, inspect the property for any concerns that people might have. We might get the building department involved if there are some structural issues. In regard to the exterior of the building, if weeds are growing too tall, we would have the public works department go out and, and measure to see if it exceeds our ordinance for how tall the grass can grow. So it's kind of a combination of health department, building department, and public works to monitor and enforce conditions of property in the city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Forrest?
This is just a comment again about a community event, and that's the house tour that the Edina Historical Society is sponsoring, and it'll be featuring John Howe Homes, he was an affiliate of Frank Lloyd Wright, so there are three homes on the tour, it's September 13th, and you can get more information from the Historical Society website.
Thank you. With that, I take a motion to adjourn. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nobody. Motion passes. Thanks, everyone.